We'll all find our seats, finish checking everyone in. Mr. Waugh is going to start us off with the invocation as he does for voting.
Will you stand with me, please? Our heavenly Father, we pray your blessings on the events of this business meeting of our community. We ask for your counsel that the conduct of our meeting will reflect our mutual trust in our voted officials and town employees. May we not withhold our appreciation for the administration of that acted upon this evening. For so we pray, amen.
Thank you, Mr. Waugh. If you would remain standing so we can do the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, if everyone could check their cellphones and make sure they're either powered down or muted, on vibrate. As you entered the room, everyone should have checked in with the ballot clerks to be able to vote. You need to have checked in with the ballot clerks on the checklist, and you need to have picked up a town report and a voter placard. Please make sure you have one of those. Thanks, Brooke. If at any point you find any typos or corrections or omissions that need to be made to the town report, please bring them to the attention of Kelly Skeehan, to my left, our town clerk. At this point, I need to know, are there any non-voters present who wish to speak in this meeting and on which article?
Do you know what it was, Paul?
Okay. Are there any objections to Mr. Eldridge speaking? Thank you.
Okay. Jen Berkowitz, Schools Out Program, Article 3.
Yes. Thank you. Are there any objections to Jen speaking? Okay. Thank you. Are there any other non-voters wishing to speak in this meeting? Oh, sorry, Mr. Harriman.
Brad Harriman, to any of the articles pertaining to public works.
Any objections? Excellent. All right. If anyone else -- oh, sorry, Ellen, sorry. Ellen White, any revenues or more articles. Any objections to Ellen? And we also have our attorney down with the end, who will speak on any legal issue that may arise through any of the articles. Are there any objections? Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. At this point, I will do introductions. To my left, I have Kelly Skeehan, our town clerk and tax collector. I then have Mr. Bob Freeman, selectman, Mr. Frank Riley, selectman, Mr. Rick Morgan, our chairman of the selectmen. We have Ellen White, our town administrator, Brad Harriman, our public works director, and Barbara Lowman, our town attorney. And to my right, I have Mr. Joe Goss, the chairman of the budget committee, and I will have him introduce his committee.
To my right is -- I'll let them introduce themselves, don't turn over. Yeah, it is. No, why are you doing it, probably? Yeah.
I'm Julie Berziah.
I'm Maria Condon.
I'm Jonathan Smith.
Tom Congrad.
Lynn Parker.
Kathleen Maloney.
We generally go by first names, so that's why.
All right. At this point, I'm going to read to you the town results of our elections yesterday. I will let you know that all new elected officials will be sworn out on Monday, March 14th, here at the town hall at 5:00. For the race of selectmen, R. Christopher Templeton received 87 votes, Richard Morgan received 255 votes. For moderator, I received 316 votes. For town clerk and tax collector, Kelly Skeehan received 338 votes. For trustee of the trust funds, Rick St. Jean received 273 votes. For cemetery trustee, Cole Perry received 287 votes. For library trustee, Judy Perry received 289 votes. For supervisors of the checklist, Cynthia Harris received 302 votes. For budget committee member, a term of three years, Jonathan Smith received 275 votes. For the budget committee member for two years, Donna Ridley received 281 votes. For the planning board member, Connie Billings received 173 votes, Dennis Legenda received 207 votes, and Rick St. Jean received 148 votes. For the water sewer commission, Roger Chakile received 196 votes, Rick St. Jean received 100 votes. For zoning board of adjustment member, Roger Chakile received 95 votes, Stan Brothers received 219 votes. And for Article 2, relative to the library, we had 258 yes votes and 16 no votes, so that passed. Does anybody need any of that reread? Questions on any of that? Moving on to the school board results. For the school board member in Effingham, the three-year term, Richard Edwards, who is unopposed, received 1,960 votes. For the school board member in Oscepe, for the three-year term, Kathy Frothingham received 1,886 votes, again unopposed. For the school board member at large, the three-year term, Lois Jean Stevens received 870 votes, Ernie Brown received 1,136 votes. For the school district moderator, one-year term, Randy Walker, again unopposed, received 2,128 votes. For each of the school articles, they all passed. I will go through and give you the vote totals, though. Article 2, relative to the administrators agreement, there were 1,593 yes votes, 884 no votes. For Article 3, relative to the special meeting for administrators, there was 1,590 yes votes, 800 no votes. For Article 4, the support staff agreement, for yes votes, there were 1,562, for no votes there were 908. For Article 5, relative to the special meeting for support staff, there was 1,608 yes votes, 816 no votes. For the teachers agreement, in Article 6, there were 1,485 yes votes, 970 no votes. Article 7, for the special meeting for teachers, there was 1,482 yes votes, 869 no votes. For Article 8, relative to the turf field, there was 1,470 yes votes, 979 no votes. For Article 9, relative to repairs and improvements, there was 1,777 yes votes, 702 no votes. For Article 10, the operating budget, there was 1,570 yes votes, 884 no votes. So all articles for the school passed. If you could all turn your attention now, please, to the guidelines for town meeting. They haven't changed. Mr. Babson? I will go over a few of the more important ones. Please make sure that all registered voters have the voting card. You need your voting card to speak or to vote. All speakers must be recognized by the moderator, and if you do wish to speak, I ask that you speak at the microphone. And when you speak at the microphone, please announce your name prior to your comment or question. If you are just moving or seconding an article, you do not need to be at the microphone. Please keep the conversation and discussion civil, refrain from using any names of others, name-calling, foul or abusive language. I will ask you to sit if that happens. Please be brief, please stick to the subject. We do have a number of articles to get through tonight. It is a school night for me. I don't want to be here too, too late. Please make sure that any article that you're going to address is the article on the floor. It must be moved and seconded, and then we can open it up for discussion. Selectmen or budget committee members may have an opportunity to speak at any time. Just please, guys, make sure that I see you, so I recognize you. To call the question, which is to end debate and move to a vote, technically, a two-thirds majority is required. We don't usually run into any issue with that. Please make sure voting cards are displayed for all votes, unless we move for a secret ballot, and then I will give you directions on how to do that. Those of you who are wishing to do a secret ballot, please make sure you have your five signatures. Please make sure you bring me your request prior to moving on the article. I already have one secret ballot request that we'll be doing for Article 19. If there are additional secret ballot requests, please bring those up to Kelly. Are there any questions relative to the guidelines? Yes. Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Will there be a break? So I'd like to request a secret ballot for 18, but I don't have any signature show.
Okay. Yes. You'll have plenty of time. Mr. Babson?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The rules appear to be in slight shape. Are we going to be able to have more than one amendment on a bill, only one at a time, but more than one if the first one is turned down?
We generally only accept two amendments, no more than two amendments to any article and no amendments to amendments. Article 3 is obviously the exception. We have not yet run into that problem, and to make you happy, it is not on here, so we'll deal with that when it gets there.
Thank you very much.
I'm getting soft in my old age.
And I'm getting more stuck.
A lot possible.
That's why we get along so well. Does anybody else have any questions relative to the guidelines? All right. At this point, then, I will ask Mr. Morgan to speak to the budget prior to opening it up for debate.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. I wanted to have a chance to speak real quickly about the budget overall and where we stand. The town of Oscepe is financially in extremely good shape, and I say that with a great pride in what we've done, but of the previous boards as well. As we said here tonight, we have no long-term debt. And I just got notified tonight, actually, that our surplus is about $200,000 north of where we thought it was, to slightly over $1 million. If this budget tonight is passed intact, the way it's written, without adding to it, we will raise about $4,000 less by taxation than we did last year. You might remember last year, it was $105,000 less than the year before, which resulted in a 30 cent decrease in the town's portion of the tax rate. If this budget passes intact, we will build a $494,000 addition to the highway garage and pay cash for it, and we're still going to raise less by taxes than we did last year. I caution you completely to be careful about adding to this, and I say that only because in a relatively short period of time, you could undo months of work. When I say work, it started with our department heads, most of whom are here, who presented really responsible budgets, and then it went through the selectmen, and then it's been through the budget committee, and it's been through the public hearings. We have trimmed wherever we thought we could trim. I think that we have presented, and are going to present to you, a very responsible budget, but in the emotion of the meeting, if money is added to it, you could undo an awful lot of work in a relatively short period of time. But we are in really good financial shape, and we look forward to having a, you know, a good debate on all of the articles. Thank you.
All right. At this point, we will open our town reports to the yellow pages in the back. We've already gone through Article 1 and 2, as they were voted on in the election yesterday. We will start with Article 3, which says, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, the budget committee recommended sum of $5,491,775 for general municipal operations. This article does not include appropriations contained in special or individual articles addressed separately. This is recommended by the selectmen, 3 to 0, and recommended by the budget committee, 6 to 0." We will look at each of these as individual line items, and then at the end of the article, after all of these line items, we will vote collectively on Article 3. I will not entertain a motion to not reconsider until we have gotten through the entire article. Okay? All right. Do I have a motion? Thank you. In a second? Thank you. We will start with the conservation agent. The budget committee recommended dollar amount is $3,230. Are there any questions or discussions on that line item?
Dallas Emery. I'm just wondering why I went from $1,000 to $3,000.
I can answer.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Last year was the first year that we had a conservation agent. We hired a gentleman who was actually retired, New Hampshire Forest Ranger, to begin to oversee in particular our timber cuts, to make sure that, one, that the cuts were being conducted properly and that the correct amount was being reported. Last year was the first year that we had him on board, and it was only for part of the year. The $3,230 represents the budget for the whole year this year, in an adjusted number of hours that we've asked him to work for us.
Any further questions or discussion on that line item? All those in favor, please raise your placards. All those opposed? Thank you. For the line item of selectmen's salary, $16,364. Is there any question or discussion on that line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the town clerk-tax collector line item, $295,850. Is there discussion on that line item or questions? Mr. Emery.
Okay, I was looking at it again. We're up $15,000 on that one. Is there a reasonable amount up into the act? No, it's like a...
You have salaries, the 3% increase, you have health insurance, and the biggest increase was our postage, because I have to mail so many certified letters.
Oh, okay.
Those were the three biggest increases.
Oh, so, but that increased by $15,000?
It did. My postage alone increased by $5,000.
Wow. Okay.
Any other questions or discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? This passes. For the line item of elections, $12,400. Without anybody having to ask, I will let you know that there are four elections in this year. We have the state primary in September and then the general election in November, so... Kelly, do you want to add to that, or...
I don't see any pieces because we have four, versus last year we had one.
Okay. Every four years, that line item jumps up significantly. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Moving on to voter registration, $11,242. Discussion or questions on this line item? Mr. Babson?
Could somebody explain why it's going up so much, please?
It's the same thing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at last year's.
We're just looking at four elections, so...
No, I was looking at 215 and not last year.
Okay. All right. All those in favor? All those opposed? This passes. For the treasurer line item, $11,330. Questions or discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the selectmen's office, $679,916. Questions or discussion on this line item? Mr. Emery.
Oh, okay, I got the same question. This one, $90,000, am I saying?
Correct. On a $670,000 budget. I can go through. No, absolutely. I don't want to discourage you, but there are about 60...
There's absolutely nothing else in the room asking something.
There are about 60 line items in the budget, many of which went down and some went up, and I will gladly read them all to you. I don't know that that's going to necessarily answer your question yet.
But is it, so it's just line items that are extra cost for the year?
It is.
Well, I have to ask the question myself.
No, I don't have any problem answering a question. It's just that this particular budget is quite large, and I would gladly go through along the line if I lost me to it.
It is large.
It could be a very long night.
Yeah, well, we don't want to go that far.
Okay.
Mr. Morgan, is there anything in particular that jumped up significantly?
There really isn't. I mean, one item that went up by $5,000 was insurance, but at the same time, the assessive budget went down $5,000. We had an $825 increase in the tax maps, a $1,300 decrease in mileage, a $5 increase in the cost of medical drug testing, a $6,000 increase in salaries, $2,000 increase in the public work directors' budget. There's a bunch of them that go up and down.
Anything else, Mr. Emery? Okay. Any other questions on the selectmen's budget? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For economic development, $2,500. Yes, sir.
Paul Eldridge. Why is that number so low?
Thank you, Paul. We used to, we actually, for years and years and years, only raised $600, which I thought was an absurdly low amount of money. We raised $1,500 last year, and the Board of Selectmen decided to increase it to $2,500 this year, because we actually do have an ad hoc committee which has been meeting, which we now want to formalize, and to get them up and to have regular meetings, begin to take minutes and to set goals and agendas. And the $2,500 we felt was necessary to put in there, because there is some available trainings which are available, which we would like some of those members of that committee to go to. So we're trying to build it up. We spent $600 for years, which is a ridiculously low amount of money. I agree.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the Ospey Lake Dam Authority, $8,170. Is there discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the line item for legal fees, $35,000. Questions on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the planning board, $16,221. Any discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the zoning board of adjustment, $5,739. Is there any discussion or questions on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For government buildings, $220,748. Is there discussion or questions on this line item? Mr. Babson?
Just an explanation.
Okay. Mr. Morgan?
Very good.
Mr. Riley?
We're looking at a decrease of approximately $16,000 on the government buildings line item.
Under government buildings, we have the salaries for the workers here, the part-time wages, with contract wages, which is part of the cleaning services. Health insurance went down by $12,770.
Is there anything major that led to that decrease?
Potably was on the savings we're having on the fuel. Obviously, we're paying a lot less for gas and diesel than we did a year ago. There's a decrease in the chemical toilets, which in fairness, you will see as an increase on the recreation budget. We simply tried to, in the interest of transparency, put it where we thought it belonged. Our sewer rent went down $3,000, and our water rent went down $500.
Questions about that, Mr. Babson?
Is there any special reason that we have town employees' salaries on the government buildings? I believe that's what you said, right?
Part of it is.
Why don't we break them out and have at least salaries in their own line item?
Because of, well, the same way that you have your police officer salaries under the police department.
Well, yeah, but the police department isn't a building, it's people. This is, it comes buildings.
We have a laborer's position which does a lot of the maintenance at the town hall buildings. It does for the wages that are in the government buildings.
Oh, it's not for the entire town.
No, 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 no. Not it. Not $37,000.
No, you got $220,000. We're working for people.
Do you know how many positions are in that?
Just one.
Just one?
Yeah.
One salary. Any other questions relative to that line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the line item for trustee of the trust funds, $6,289. Is there discussion on that line item? Or questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For cemeteries, $34,204. Is there discussion on this line item?
I'll ask.
Mr. Emery.
Is there a reason why this is up? So $6,000? The cemetery? Is this something we're doing different? We got a $4,500, well, Roy, a couple of the cemetery trustees here, but reading quickly, there's a $4,500 increase in the actual maintenance of cemeteries. Roy, do you want to speak to it?
Is that including the cost of no, or is that just the...
You'll need to go to a microphone, please.
I'm Roy Baron, chairman of cemetery trustees. There's some stuff not played on tonight. That increase is due to the possibility of taking over the Chickville Cemetery, which is a live area. I don't know what else I can say to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Emery, any follow-up questions before you sit down?
No, no, that's what I need to know.
Okay. Any further discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For insurance, we have $65,000. Mr. Line?
Is this a savings that we can expect in future years? Can you tell me what's going on?
The insurance line includes an expense for workers' compensation, property liability trust, and our general insurance. In the past, we've changed over to a fiscal year payment plan with our current provider. We're now moving forward with a calendar year, and we're actually changing carriers. The coverage isn't going to change, the price will not change, but in last year, we budgeted 18 months. This year, we only have to budget for six months of coverage, and then we'll go back onto a calendar year payment. So I guess the bottom line is that we'll probably be looking at around $130,000 a year, but because we paid additional last year, it's a good year to show a cost savings on one line item.
Are there any further questions about that line item or discussion? Are there any further questions about that line item or discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the police department, one million sixty-one thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars. Discussion on this line item? Mr. Ryan.
Just an explanation on the increase.
Thank you. Mr. Eldridge?
Uh, it's going to be the same raises health insurance, state retirement, um, makes up for about fifty thousand of that raise right there, which is just in those line
Any other further discussion or questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the police special duty, twenty-five thousand dollars. Questions or discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the dog officer, thirteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Discussion or questions on this line item? Thank you, Mr. Emery.
Okay, so this is increase two? Is there a big demand for the dog officers?
Who would like to speak to that?
The, the increase in this year's portion of the dog budget, yes, one, they do answer a lot of dog calls, and I would call on the chief to answer as far as the numbers, which I don't have it in my hand. But the, but the biggest, the biggest increase in the budget is a thousand dollars under disease prevention, because we do, with the dog officer, it's a new dog officer, and they have to look through a series of rabies inoculations, which are quite expensive, to the tune of almost a thousand dollars.
Okay, so, oh, so it's basically for inoculations for the officer?
That's the increase, yes.
Okay. All right, that's what I hear.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you.
If I could ask us to reconsider for a moment, I just have a question about the police special duty officer. Is it possible to do that at this point?
It is.
Okay. Is this the, um, the, um, school resource officer that we have in the elementary school?
I don't know what that is.
Is the special duty officer that we have here twenty-five thousand?
No, he's in my budget.
Okay.
Um, that is for the commercial details.
Okay.
In order for us to do it, we have to raise money in order to just give it back.
Thank you.
Any other questions relative to the police special duty? We will not revote, because we will technically revote at the very end of the article. All right, moving on to the fire warden, twenty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. Are there questions or discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the highway, one million two hundred and ninety-seven thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Questions or discussion on this line item? Mr. Ryan.
Can we just get an explanation?
Mr. Harriman.
Yeah, thanks, Jim. We have a, overall, it's about an eighteen-thousand-dollar increase of one-point-four percent on the entire budget. Uh, we do have a, uh, a twelve-thousand-dollar increase in, in wages for the union contract, and there's also a twenty-one-thousand-dollar increase in health insurance. Uh, we have a three-thousand-dollar increase in retirement. We've made some cuts. Uh, we have a five-thousand-dollar reduction in contract equipment, which is going on renting equipment to work along with our efforts, stuff that we don't have in-house. Uh, five-thousand-dollar decrease in contract services, and we have also a ten-thousand-dollar decrease in the diesel fuel for our department there. And, uh, let's see, five-thousand-dollar decrease in the, uh, the equipment purchasing line for buying small pieces of chainsaws, stuff like that that we normally buy, so.
Any other questions or discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the transfer station, four hundred and thirty-three thousand eighty-three dollars. Questions or discussion on this line item?
Okay, I just want to ask you.
Mr. Emery.
Explain the increase on that also, because I, I thought originally that once we transferred over to recycling, we were supposed to start going down in Boston, the transfer station, uh, seems to go up every year, so I'm just wondering what it is that's going up this year, besides maybe insurance, that's what I've heard the last three things, insurance benefits, things like that.
Mr. Harriman.
Yes, um, we do have a, uh, a six-thousand-dollar increase in the, uh, salaries there, or we also have a seven-thousand-dollar decrease in the health insurance, uh, which basically offsets each other there. Um, we have, uh, there is a two-thousand-dollar increase in the electric, uh, service to the, to the department over there. Um, one of the bigger ones we do have an increase is in our recycling disposal. Um, the cost of hauling the, the commodities off and stuff has, has gone up with contracts each year and stuff like that, and, and we've also added in, the last two years now, we've added in our second, uh, we call Earth Day, we have free, free day for people to come in and dump, which we have to pay for all that to go out and stuff, so that ended up being about a seventy-five-hundred-dollar increase right there. So, those things added in together, you know, brought us up to that, uh, the increase
Mr. Emery, if you'd like to speak at the microphone.
It's not a lot, but it's, it's only ten thousand dollars. I just wanted a little clarification, that's why I'm asking.
Thank you.
Mr. Morgan.
The only other thing that I would add to that, now, is there are a significant amount of revenues that come in from the recycling, but those come in in a different area, they come in on the revenue side, so it will not be reflected in the budget itself.
Okay. So, if it's not reflected in the budget itself?
They can't be.
Okay, so it doesn't get added back in?
No, we have, we have to raise everything that is going to be expended, and then there are amounts, amounts of monies, in this case, on the transfer station, that come back into the town as a revenue, but they will not, the budget still has to be raised in order for it to be spent.
Okay.
I'm not suggesting that it's offset.
But it can't be lowered by the amount of revenue that's gathered?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Jen Dora?
On all the health benefits and everything that you've itemized on your sheets, do we, are we able to see how the organization goes? Can we look at that?
Absolutely.
Because you can tell us that, but for us to see it itemized would be, because it's all health benefits, raises, I mean, that should be, that's not listed in here. Is that something we can see?
You'd like to come up? I have some right here.
Look, I'm not trying to, I mean, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but this, this is, this is.
It's a foundation within that you're telling us is rabies, so, but you're just curious.
I get that, but I'm not trying to be funny, but this is the budget.
Okay.
I don't think it would be realistic to print a copy for everybody. Now, having said that, I'm not, I'm not at all trying to duck any questions. What I am saying, though, is that this has been a, a months-long process, including we had a complete public hearing to give anybody and everybody the opportunity to ask. We don't want to cut you out.
Right.
It's just that the budgets get very cumbersome and very large, so I don't know if it's realistic to itemize every item within every budget.
Jen, Jen, just to let you know that during the public hearings for the Budget Committee and for the selectmen, they do take each of these line items and discuss what makes up each of those line items, and that's what's in their binders, so that's why it's not in this book.
Okay.
Yes, sir, please come to the microphone.
Right, right, just a simple question. Is there someplace in town where if I wanted to look at that entire budget, I could?
You can walk into our selectmen's office any day, Monday through Friday, and we would gladly let you look at it or provide you a copy of it.
All right, well, no, I'm just asking because, you know, it seems to be questions. Now, everybody knows you can come and look at it.
This, this is a very long and open, a long and open process. We want to include everybody. If you have a question, by all means, come and we will get you the answer.
Thank you.
The place to ask for most of these questions that are being asked here tonight should be at the public budget hearing, uh, not here at the town meeting. Um, and only two people have showed up at the, at the public hearing this year.
Sir Paul.
Kevin Poole. Well, since the dump is like the only revenue generating department in the town, what happens to the plastic and glass? And they, they generate revenue, so why is there an increase? Shouldn't they be selling the, the trash? I mean, I know there's a market for metal, but honestly, is there a market for plastic bottles and, and tin can, and glass? Where do you sell glass?
Mr. Harriman.
Glass is actually, we don't, we're not able to sell glass, we have to pay to get rid of that.
So we're going to compact it?
No, the glass.
So we're recycling for now?
Sir Poole, let him answer the question.
The glass gets hauled down to a glass recycling facility in Wakefield. All the other commodities, the plastic, the tin cans, aluminum cans, cardboard, all that stuff gets recycled, baled, and does get sold on the market. And as, uh, Mr. Morgan explained, that revenue that comes in from that doesn't appear back against his budget, it goes back into the general fund of the town, which, you know, offsets, you know, gives the general fund, it is, the surplus is being built up, and then, you know, to the selectmen's discretion, we get to use that to either offset taxes or, that's how that would apply back to the taxpayers.
I have another question.
Yes.
Since Ron Davis retired, how many employees are there, there? Because personally, I think the dump is overstapped. My opinion.
There were, uh, there were four full-time employees.
Wow.
When, let me finish. When Ron Davis retired, this board chose not to replace that vacancy.
Thank you.
We did appoint from within Bruce DeVidum, Bruce is here.
He is.
Bruce is here. Took Ron's place as our, as our supervisor over there, and does an outstanding job, but we did make the decision to go from four full-time employees to three, because we felt that it was not necessary.
It's still overstapped. Thank you.
Is there further discussion on this line item? We are still on the transfer station, four hundred and thirty-three thousand eighty-three dollars. Questions? Discussion? Yes, Mr. Swenson.
Take the microphone down. My name is Mark Swenson. So if we went from four to three, and we increased the, why do we increase the budget if we went from four full-time employees to three?
The four to three was last year's reduction.
Okay.
So this, this is the budget that was in place last year for three full-time people and then all of the associated costs.
Okay.
So this budget does not reflect that four to three. The four to three happened before last time meeting, but talking about is staffing.
I was not here last time meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Further discussion or questions?
From that, I might just.
Yes, Mr. Conrad.
I'd like to just make a comment, because it is a little bit confusing, these budgets. For example, uh, the town clerk tax collector Kelly's budget was two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, but you look on the revenue page, and the revenue for motor vehicle permits was seven-hundred thousand dollars. So we can't have a, a negative thing in the budget that we have to raise the money, the three-hundred thousand dollars, and then she goes out and collects seven-hundred thousand dollars, which goes into the general fund, our wonder fund, to help offset taxes.
And can you tell us what page the revenues are on?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The revenue page, you might have lost it. Need change. Uh, twenty-six.
So if you're looking for those revenues, you can look on page twenty-six that Mr. Conrad is referring to. Is there any further discussion on the transfer station? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Moving on to the outside agencies, we will start with the Appalachian Mountain Team Project at twelve hundred dollars. Is there discussion or questions on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For CAP, twelve thousand dollars. Discussion or questions on this line item? Mr. Morton.
Uh, just a quick question.
Yes.
Uh, the problems that were all been, were, uh, have been exposed in the past, pretty well settled, because everyone knows.
Mr. Lovett, if you didn't hear him, asked about problems relative to CAP in the past and had they been resolved?
To the best of our knowledge, yes, they have. I think that they're, they seem to be back on level footing, and she's certainly here to speak on the fuel assistance portion of it.
Yeah, sure. Lisa Hankley, president of OSPE.
Stand a little closer, using them loud, so.
Thank you. Yeah, on the fuel assistance offices and one CAP asking for the funds, and they are back on level footing for the last couple of years now, we've been doing pretty good. Um, you know, paying down all the debt, getting rid of buildings they no longer needed, and trying to stop being the end-all, be-all to everybody's problems, so we just kind of rolled back to what is the core, um, you know, things that work for CAP, and stopped trying to do all these extra projects. And, um, the funding we're asking for is for the fuel assistance. As you know, federal funds come into the state, only a small amount of those funds can be used for administration, and we have to ask the towns and other places for the funds to try to, um, offset the, keep the community outreach offices open. Thank you.
Mr. Lovett.
Uh, I'll say that. Ask this question. Uh, the state of the country, I think, loaned a community act for about a million dollars, is that about right?
Yeah.
Uh, and, uh, that hasn't been repaid at this point in time. Uh, I think the directors of the program, is that correct?
Um, I'm not sure anything about the, um, the whole fiscal thing, just about the fuel assistance for the federal funds, um, but I know they have, um, we had a meeting that came down, and they had, um, a five-year plan, and they were saying what they'd like to have for the employees, and what their debt was, and how they've been paying it down, so I believe they've been working hand-in-hand with the state to resolve those issues of, um, you know, what the state had actually loaned them, but that's separate from the fuel assistance money that we asked for.
Hey, but I think the, if I'm, uh, and like, I think the state has brought a suit against the directors and also some of the.
Mr. Lovett, can you go to the microphone? We can't hear you.
I can hear you.
I think the, uh, you can clarify if I, um, please do. Uh, I think the state has brought a suit against all the directors and some of the principals, uh, people, actually, the executives in the program.
The previous ones.
Yes.
Yeah, the ones in the past before the.
But that's in order to try to, to try to, uh, recover the million dollars, uh, as I understand that they had to do that, uh, in order to fill the insurance company, am I right on that?
I'm not sure, they may have, but I would be glad to look into that for you, for that, yeah.
I, I am talking about that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Any other discussion relative to the twelve thousand dollars per CAP? All those in favor? All those opposed? Moving on to caregivers of Southern Carroll County, twenty-five hundred dollars. Discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For Carroll County Transit, three thousand dollars. Discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For N sixty-eight Hours of Hunger, five thousand dollars. Discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For Freedom Food Pantry, eight thousand dollars. Mr. Brothers.
Does this actually go to the Town of Freedom, or is this called Freedom Food Pantry?
It's, it's called the Freedom Food Pantry, it does not go to the Town of Freedom.
Okay. All right.
Any other discussion or questions? Yes, Mr. Lovett, if you could go to the microphone.
The only question I do have, is, is I recall, uh, when I was elected a few years ago, uh, we didn't fund that particular, I don't think, if I recall, uh, on the basis that we have our own food kitchen, is that right?
I, I don't know what you guys used to do. I can tell you that I, they, we have, we have approved it the three years that I've been here. Uh, these folks came in, they're a volunteer food pantry in the town, that happens to be in the Town of Freedom. They serve a tremendous number of OSPE people. I believe primarily the reason being is that they were open on Saturdays when the Agape Food Pantry was not. Um, however, they came in with absolute data showing that they provide an awful lot more than eight thousand dollars of aid to OSPE residents. We didn't feel that it made any difference whether they were getting that aid in Oak Grove, in Freedom, or otherwise, they were our people who were being fed.
Uh, thank you, Rick. I sort of agree with that, uh, I don't really have any trouble with that, but I, I, I think we, we also have our own food kitchen.
I don't really have any trouble with that, but I, I think we, we also have our own food kitchen, correct?
We, the Agape Ministries.
I think, I think you're feeling as, as a lot of people possibly are serviced by the Freedom Foods there. All right, thank you.
That's great.
Yep.
Any other discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the Kingswood Youth Group, four thousand dollars. Discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. We will skip Life Bridge Mentoring as there is no dollar value there. Move on to Life Ministries for six thousand dollars. Discussion on this line item? Mr. Emery?
Can I ask what Life Ministries is?
Sure.
Are they in Ospe?
It is the, this is the other food pantry that I was just talking about. It's the, part of the Life Ministries. It's located physically in the Town of Wolfboro.
Okay.
Again, they came in and showed us documentation that they served, let me if I'm wrong, right? There's, there's an excess of twenty-five thousand dollars worth of aid, which they had provided to Ospe residents.
Mr. Perry, did you have a question?
No, yeah, it's the same question.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the Main Street Program, five thousand dollars. Discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For Medication Bridge, three hundred and fifty-three dollars. Discussion on this line item? Mr. Emery?
I ask what the Medication Bridge does and if it's a bridge for people that need it, for the medications, what's paying for them? Should it be more than what it is?
The Medication Bridge is a program that is exactly that. It is to help provide medication to those who cannot afford it. This amount of money is specifically what they requested. It has actually gone down. My understanding is because more and more people are on Medicaid and therefore it's being covered. But this is specifically what they asked for.
All right.
Further discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For Northern Human Services, four thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars. Discussion or questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For OCC, twenty thousand dollars. Discussion or questions on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For OCC Daycare, seven thousand dollars. Discussion or questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For Ospe Children's Fund, twenty thousand dollars. Discussion or questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the Ospe Historical Society, four thousand dollars. Discussion or questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the Schools Out Program, twenty thousand dollars. Questions or discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For Starting Point, two thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars. Discussion on that line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the White Mountain Community Health, four thousand thirty-three dollars. Discussion or questions on that line item? Yes, Mr. Emery?
Is this the community health that, that's in Tanway?
I believe it's in North Calway. This organization was actually the recipient of town funds for years and years and years. I can't resist, but last year they came to us and said that they weren't asking for any money because the Affordable Care Act was going to save them. It didn't, it didn't do it. So they came back this year and needed money again.
Understood.
Mr. Brothers?
Just, just a point. They're actually in Conway on Room sixteen, right next to NB Tractor.
Thank you, Stephen.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the Central New Hampshire VNA in Ospe, fourteen thousand dollars. Discussion or questions on this line item? Are you already turning your papers? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Now I will turn mine. Onto the ambulance, one hundred and ninety-two thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Discussion or questions on this line item? Mr. Howard?
Rick Howard, West Ospe. Rick, can you just inform the, the town residents if they didn't read this report to remind them of how much we paid for the ambulance last year versus what we're paying for this year and for the next couple of years?
Yeah. You may remember a couple of years ago, we hit the sticker shock of having to raise, I think it was five hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars for our ambulance service. We told you then that we were going to pursue and try to get into a multi-town agreement, which we did. We now have a six-town agreement with the towns around us in sharing that resource and obviously a tremendous reduction in price. This hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars is a little lower than what it will be next year. It actually, this only raises about nine months of the contract because we had three months of the money left from last year. It will level out at around two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Two hundred and sixty-six thousand nine hundred dollars will level out for the remainder of the contract, which doesn't expire until 2020. So it was a good thing.
Mr. Emery?
Can I ask why you didn't put that in this year? If you're expecting it to go up next year?
Because, one, we didn't need the money. We had three months of the ambulance money, which was raised last year, that we still had. So we encumbered it all.
No, no, I got that. I understood that.
So we raised it.
You have that three months. Why didn't you just include it in to this year's budget, even though you already had it? Because you're going to ask for it next year anyway. Is what I gathered, right? It's going to go up next year.
I think you're missing my point.
Okay.
We had three months of the ambulance contract money left from last year. So we encumbered those funds, which means they got raised over, carried over to this year. So therefore, we didn't need to raise the full amount. We already had some of the money.
Right. Okay.
But just so everybody knows, next year, that line item will be back up to two sixty-six.
But that's what, that's what you said. And that's why I'm trying to figure out why it's going to go to two sixty-six next, next year anyway. Why don't you split the cost?
I think you're losing here. Let me try this one more time.
No, no, no. You can't, why you can't do it?
It was two, it was still two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars this year.
Okay.
We did not need to raise the full two sixty-six because we had some of the money there.
I got you. So next year, it's going to go back to two sixty-six?
Correct. Okay.
Now I'm on the same page.
Okay.
Mr. Brothers?
Thank you. I know.
What are the six-times?
We have a multi-town agreement now between us, Effingham, Freedom, Madison, Tanway, and MB.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? Mr. Lovett?
Thank you. I'm wondering, in the course of these ambulance contracts, and figures certainly sound good. I think I'm going to agree. But I wonder if anybody has actually taken the town to, I think, in the, in the terms of the contract, there's supposed to be so many paramedics on duty, so many CEMTs on duty, so many ambulance crews available. Has anybody actually ever taken the time to confirm indeed these things are being carried out as, as they should be?
Absolutely. We are blessed with three very, very proficient fire chiefs who we have tasked to oversee and to report to us any problems with staffing, response, or anything else. If they have a problem, they see a problem, they notify us and then we can deal with it. And I can tell you that the contract today has been running quite smoothly with virtually no problems.
Any other discussion on this line item? Mr. Poole?
So do we get a free ride? As a taxpayer, do we get a free ride to the hospital? Or how much does it cost? If I have to call 911, is it going to be like a five thousand dollar bill in addition to this?
If, if I knew it was going to be you, Kevin, I'd charge six thousand. Thank you. In all, in all due respect, there is no such thing in this world as a free ride.
Oh, no. More like a sleigh ride.
That what this, what the ambulance contract does for you, for us, in all sincerity, is it guarantees that 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, if you or one of your loved ones needs an ambulance, you're going to pick up a phone and an ambulance is going to be there. That's what the contract guarantees. This is a, this is a supplement, quite frankly, of a, of a, of a private ambulance company that allows them to then staff all of those ambulances for our availability. So no, it's not a free ride. If you do use the ambulance, you are going to get a bill. And I don't know that how that is ever going to change.
I see. Thank you.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Moving on to the emergency management, six thousand seven hundred dollars. Any discussion or questions on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the general assistance, fifty-five thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Discussion or questions on this line item? Mr. Emery, a question?
I just wanted a little bit of an explanation. The general assistance, does that have anything to do with any of these other programs that we've already have put into?
It is not. The general assistance is, we would, we normally refer to as town welfare. It's, it's town aid for those who, it could be rent, it could be utilities, it could be heating bills, it could be groceries and.
No, no, I, I understand what it's for. I'm just didn't know if it was getting disposed into these other programs.
No, no, this is, this is a completely separate budget.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For recreation, one hundred and eighty-two thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars. Questions or discussion on this line item?
If I might?
Yes, Mr. Morgan?
Peter is here, I know he is. Where is he? He's completely capable of speaking to the, to the particulars of his budget, but the, the majority of the increase is that the Board of Selectmen have decided to, or believe, recommend that we hire another person part-time in the recreation department. We have been tasking Peter to try to come up with more hours and more programs, in particular during times when the school is not in session. Vacations, those types of things. We really quickly realized that, and I think most of you would agree, that Peter does a good job. He works a lot of hours. And if we want more program, there, there isn't the time in his, in his schedule to do that. So we have recommended that, that we hire a part-time person to help provide those additional programs. And Peter can stick to the rest of his budget and I'm sure he could have spoken to this better than you.
Is there any discussion or questions on this line item? Mr. Perry, if you'd like to go to the microphone, state your name and ask your question.
I was under the assumption that he already had an assistant.
There, there was for several years, a full-time assistant director. That position was, was taken away several years ago now. And Peter is chief cook and bottle washer at the Recreation Department.
Thank you.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the library, we have two hundred and twenty-one thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars. Discussion on this line item? Mr. Door?
Yes, nice to meet you. Nice to sit down. Yeah, is it really cost-effective to really, you know, have the library? Are we getting the numbers in there, you know, to really make it, you know, work their while, you know, as a town to support it? I mean, are we getting a hundred people going to the library? Are we getting 10,000? Do we have any numbers on that?
I'd like to speak to the library.
Well, we don't oversee the library per se. They have their own thing. There's got to be somebody at the library that can speak to it. They.
I'm the library director. I don't have numbers with me today, but we do have a significant amount of people that use the library in this town and that are grateful for it.
Well, that's nice, but still, it seems kind of expensive to get 20 people using the library, which everybody today has, you know, an iPhone or a laptop.
We get more than 20 people per day using the library when we're open.
Are you sure you got those numbers? Can you show those numbers?
I can show you those numbers if you want to come with us.
But that's nice, you know, but it's costing the taxpayers a fortune around here. That's the problem. I don't get it.
It does cost money to educate our children.
We don't educate them at the schools?
We do educate them at the schools. We need to educate them at the library.
Do you understand that?
Mr. Door? If you have a question, it needs to come through me.
Oh, I'm debating you. Yes.
We don't, we don't do that here.
Right. Well, I'm just saying.
Your, your question is relative to the statistics and who uses and how many. Clearly, we don't have the numbers right here. I know there's a library report in the book that you can look at. But if you want to have further statistics, then I think you can go into the library. Ms. Parker?
The library report is on page forty-eight. And it shows the number of borrowers for this past year was two thousand nine hundred and five.
So what's that cost per person then? To use it really?
You know.
Let's, let's be realistic.
I, I personally consider it the best bargain in town. Two hundred thousand dollars.
I don't see any of it. I don't, I don't, I don't really get your point because I don't see where the education part of it can show that the kids have really benefited or anybody's really benefited from it? Or is it just a nice building to look at?
Mr. Fishburne?
Ash Fishburne, business owner here in town. And just to speak on that, there's more benefit to the library or anything that's in this town because otherwise, no one will come in it. Being a business owner here who's invested his own money in the downtown area can attest to the fact that anyone going to the library might stop at one of our businesses. I think there's a lot more benefit to a library than just education and books. We need to develop the downtown area.
Any other discussion relative to the library? Yes, sir.
Bob Bustel, West Ospe. The gentleman seems to be focusing on education value for the children. I'm almost 68 years old. I'm not in school anymore. And I find the library a wonderful facility, excellent staff, good resources, and it gets used, believe me. And the statistic about number of people who took out lenders or whatever it was listed in the library report, not all library visits involve checking something out. You go there, browse around, and leave. It's a great facility. And any civilized town should have a library. Give me a break.
Thank you. I also want to point out that the library has 10 public access computers as well as Wi-Fi for people who don't have computers of their own at home. And they also provide databases for anybody who wants to do genealogical research and all kinds of resources. So the library that George Door and I remember as kids is not the library of today. And this is cheap money. Try and see what your taxes do if a town loses a library.
Kim Oltenmeyer, Center of Ospe. One of the reasons that I'm up here is to say that a lot of the homeschooling children also use the library. I use the library and I know a lot of families here besides me use the library, not just for their children, but for their elderly as well as their adults. I'm one of them that goes in there not on an everyday basis, but at least once or twice a year. And I use the library to find stuff that I can't find online that the library will have, including some videos that I can rent, and as well as computer classes that I didn't get. Thank you. Yes?
Eileen Levin. I was a former library trustee for several decades and was part of the trustee group that added the addition that I still think of as a new addition, but it's probably about 20 years old. And I think the town really needs to go in. If you have any questions, make sure that you are going to the library yourself, so you'll understand what's going on. And take a good look and see what the new addition looks like. It is filled to the gills. There's not enough room for everybody. The children's section is very crowded. And actually, if we're going to be talking about the library, we need to be considering where we're going to add more space, because we do not have enough room for the facility right now. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Eldridge.
I think we're getting a little bit caught up on for it, on against it. I think Mr. Door's point was, in today's technology age, I can access more on my iPhone than you could put in 100 libraries. His point is that it's given to be almost not cost-effective to have books on a shelf when I can have every book you've got in the library in my phone. What he's trying to say is it's getting to a tipping point financially where it might be time to start looking at a new model, like James mentioned, the access to Wi-Fi, which is a very good thing for people that don't have an iPhone and have access. It's just a matter of are you going to allocate money for larger buildings? Or are you going to move more towards the technology end of it? I think it's a good thing to have in the town. I think it would be ludicrous not to have it. But I think the point he's trying to make is that with the technology moving as fast as it does, is it becoming... obsolete, yeah. Not obsolete as far as education, but obsolete the fact that I can get one on my phone and you can put in town those buildings.
Murray?
I agree with you. I agree with you that a lot of technology is available on phones, on iPhones, on tablets, on... But there are a lot of people that still don't have that in this area. A lot of people that have cellphones may not have a smartphone, and they're not able to get on it. I still know a lot of people myself that don't even have computers at home. So, if you need to fill out an application, even at the schools, you know, if you want to fill out an application for your child to join a sports team, and you don't have that access at home, you do have that access at the library. So, it's more... I mean, I understand what you're saying, but it's still a necessity for the town to have, in my opinion.
Again, as you're not saying to make it obsolete, but we see a 7,000 increase, increasing, increasing.
Is it there?
Where is it? I mean, not that we think the library's great, our kids went to the library. So, you know that. But it's just increased by 7,000. Where is this?
Ms. Sheffer?
Hi, hello, Sheffer. I'm the coordinator of the library. I have been since 1993. I have seen a huge, huge increase in demand. If there wasn't the demand for a public access computer or help with, what you say, applications. To apply for a substitute, you have to go to a computer and fill it out. We have a lot of people, as you say, that do not have one. We get people in the summer also coming in to check there, because they don't have computers here in the summer.
We're not going to engage in cross-debate. If you have questions, you need to be at the microphone and be recognized. So, please, Ms. Sheffer, finish your point, but let's not engage.
Okay, my simple point is, if there wasn't a demand, we would not be able to supply. And there is a very large demand, okay? And please come by and check it out.
Mr. Brothers.
Move the question.
Okay, we can't technically, because we're on a line item. But I will ask, is there any new comments to be made relative to the library? Okay. So, we'll come to a vote on this particular line item. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Moving on to patriotic purposes, $2,000. Questions or discussion on this line item? Mr. Emery.
Is this for fireworks? Is that what this is for?
No.
What can you buy for $2,000?
The vast majority of the patriotic purposes is to purchase flags and markers for the veterans in every cemetery in the town.
Okay. So, can we put some in for fireworks, then?
All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the conservation commission, $5,965. Discussion or questions on that line item? Yes, sir, Mr. Brownell.
Thanks for recognizing me.
I hadn't seen you all night.
Good evening. I don't know how to address this. It doesn't have nothing to do really with the figures, but it has to do with conservation commissions. We have a very nice view on Boulder Hill that was put in by the conservation commission. You know where it is?
Yes.
They hopped it. You've got a beautiful sign there, and you've got a section in there. I was talking to the selectmen, they do have a contract for bullet holes. I would suggest that the conservation commission get together and maybe put one up down there, because people are using it for not worse purposes. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brownell. Any other discussion relative to this line item? Yes, Mr. Levin.
Under the conservation commission, I'm not sure if the town forest comes under that or not. Comes under the item one on the town report, is it?
Conservation issue.
I'm not sure what you're asking. The town forest, as far as the overseeing of the town forest?
Well, actually, just to give you a quick explanation, it might be helpful. I had the pleasure of serving with Roy Cemetery trustee in 2014 to fill in. And we thought a lot of the town forest was a possible site for an additional cemetery. While we were doing that, we cruised the law, this is about 10 acres there. And this enormous amount of marketable timber that's going to be red hatted very sharply. Well, I owe you that to Roy, who sees my parents farm than I am. You can tell him about that, Roy. Everybody wants to put me in hot seat tonight. We did cruise a lot there a couple of years ago, and there is a lot of pine that's starting to go bad. It's probably want to get our new conservation officer to look at. Be a good idea.
That is the first I've heard of it, and we would have no problem having him look at it.
Yeah, white stuff and it's red hot, so that's what he's referring to.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Mr. Hula, question relative to conservation commission?
Yes, I served on the conservation commission board for four years, and there's a lot of rare and endangered orchids on that property that they overlook.
Interesting. Any other questions or discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. We will skip over long-term debt principal and long-term debt interest, move on to interest on the line of credit for $10,000. Is there any question or discussion on that line item? Yes, Mr. Ames.
Is this because we're needing to borrow more money, so we need to have it increased? Or you're anticipating interest increase?
No, neither. But what the inherited certainly speak to this as well. But what the banks are doing now on our 10 notes is they're charging us a quarter of a point to have the money available, whether we borrow it or not. We received authorization to borrow up to $2.5 million, just as a point of interest and a little bit of bragging. In years past, the town always began borrowing and barge. Last year, we didn't borrow until the last week of October. We borrowed a small amount of money and paid it back in 30 days. So, we are still continuing to get the $2.5 million authorization, but there was a slight increase in the actual rate. But the biggest portion of it was they're charging us to have the money available.
Mr. Emery?
Yes, I would just like to add that we're also in the process of seeing if we can get a revolving credit, a line of credit rather than that. There seems to be some problems going on. I've talked with one bank, we're talking to another one tomorrow. Our interest rate went from, on the $10,000, from 1.4% down to 1.3%. What it does again.
Any other discussion or questions on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Moving down to the water line item, $205,852. Questions or discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the sewer line item, $189,842. Questions or discussion on this line item? Yes, sir, Mr. Eldridge.
There's a flaw in the way, I don't know how you're ever going to correct it. If I turned on my water and I was going to wash my car, the way that they calculate it now is I took the water out of the line, it's going into gray water. But it might be on my lawn, but I'm still going to get billed as gray water. My friend installed the lawn, and he had this issue. He used 2,500 gallons to get his lawn established. But he got billed that it went into gray water when it went into grass. It's kind of... You know, I have a question about how it can be corrected.
Okay. Do you want to speak to that, Murray? I don't know if that's relative to what we're discussing here.
Are you talking about the sewer hole?
No, 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 I'm talking about if you take...
Yeah, but who are you talking to? Your friend? Because I know that...
Mr. Eldridge, can you just say your name?
It's Wayne Eldridge.
And can you talk for me, please?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
What I'm asking, Wayne, is if I use 2,500 gallons of water on my lawn, the system is going to bill it that it went into gray water, correct?
Yes.
Is there any way to correct it?
No.
Thank you. Let's just remember we're talking about the budgeting process here, and we're talking about a dollar value. We'll move on to that later. Do you have a question about the dollar value?
In the MWRA, they give them separate meters for the outside use. Get yourself another meter.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion relative to the $189,842 that they're looking to raise and appropriate tonight? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. We will now look at the total dollar amount. We have had zero amendments, is that correct? And all line items have passed as written and as recommended by the budget committee. So, the total value of Article III would be $5,491,775. Is there any further questions or discussion before we move to vote on the article as a whole? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. This passes?
May I move now to reconsider?
There is a motion to not reconsider Article III, and a second. All those in favor of not reconsidering Article III? Thank you, all those opposed. Thank you, Mr. Babson. All right, we will not reconsider Article III. We will take a short five-minute break. And we will start promptly at 8 o'clock, please. All right, I'm banging the galley. Let's get started, please. All right, we are moving on to Article IV to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $494,000 for the purpose of constructing in addition to the existing highway garage and to authorize the withdrawal of $179,492 from the Highway Building Capital Reserve Fund created for that purpose. The balance of $314,508 is to come from general taxation. This is recommended by the selectmen and recommended by the budget committee. Do I have a motion on Article IV? Thank you, and a second? Thank you. This is now open to discussion. Are there questions? Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Greg Howard, Ossosapi. Two questions. Brad, the money that we're pulling out of the capital reserve, does that take that down to zero?
I'll take that, yes. Yes, it will.
And number two, the proposed addition is what's being presented on the plans that are here in the front of the building.
That's correct.
Thank you.
If I might?
Mr. Morgan?
This should come as no surprise. We've been saving money for several years getting ready for this. For those of you who were here at the town meeting last year, we told you that it was our intention to have the engineering and everything done out of the funds that we already had. We have done that. The engineering is complete. The single biggest part of the addition is a full maintenance bay, which will have the capabilities of lifting even the full-size dump trucks. One of the things that this board has concentrated on the last three years is trying to improve efficiencies and look at ways where we can save money. One of the areas that we've identified is we spend a tremendous amount of money to outside garages or maintenance. In many cases, we have to pay as much as $700 or $800 just to tow a truck to a place to be worked on. We are very quickly approaching the point where we believe it would be cost-effective to do more of our own maintenance in-house. The first step that has to be overtaken in order to have that happen is we have to have a place for them to work on. We have guys now at the garage right now who are extremely good mechanically, who do an awful lot of work on the trucks. And sometimes they have to pull them outside to have room to work on them. This building, the highway department, was built in 1975, over 40 years ago, and nothing's been done to it. We think it's time. We think that it's a responsible plan. And part of the savings and the reason we're able to do this is what we were able to negotiate on the ambulance contract, that we're able to build this building and still raise less by taxes this year than we did last year. And we certainly hope you'll support it.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Just Bob Postel, Ossosapi. Just a quick logistical question. If some other agency in the Ossosapi area, just hypothetically, one of the fire departments or something, wanted to use that magic lift to lift up their truck or whatever, would it be available in a mutual assistance kind of way?
The quick answer is yes. One of the things that we will be looking at when we determine when it becomes efficient to actually have a mechanic is to also include the fire departments. We have a fleet of police vehicles, which, I mean, it sounds crazy, but they, with almost every vehicle, they require at least an oil change at least once a month because of the mileage. It will be outside of just the highway. And we've been all time, all department vehicles, as well as the precinct vehicles.
So, if we have the facility, it might make sense to have a town employee who's a for-real mechanic and his full-time job is keeping the town fleet running.
Well, maybe, and that's one of the things we're looking at. But the first step before we can get there is we have to have a place for them to work.
Thank you.
Mr. Fishburne.
Ash Fishburne, Senator Ossosapi. So, our highway budget that we just approved is nearly 1.3 million. I'm assuming the costs associated with this garage would be put under that at a later date in that budget? The highway department and all of that, with the expenses of this new building and what it brings for expense in the future, would that be applied to that highway budget that we just approved in Article III?
Yes.
Is there any way to see a projection of what kind of increases we're going to see on that 1.3 million in the next couple of years?
Well, first and foremost, if we decided that it was time to hire a mechanic, it could be a significant increase. I mean, we'll have to gauge whether or not that is cost-effective when we get there. But as far as the actual additional costs, I guess by square footage, it would cost a little bit more to heat, it would cost a little bit more to keep the lights. Past that, I don't think that's going to be a tremendous impact on the budget as it relates to just this building.
And employment?
Again, if we decided that, brought to you next year, that it was, and had the numbers to support a mechanic, then maybe quite possibly it would be up. But it really will, we haven't got there yet.
Follow-up, Mr. Fishburne?
Yes, please. So, correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm about to spend a half million dollars, you're not budgeted out longer than a year?
No.
No one's given that any thought to the expense? So, I guess for the... So I guess for the taxpayers in here, you might wanna give some thought to what this might do to the expenses of...
Oh, no.
No?
I actually think, though, that the expenses that you're talking about, the only additional expenses as it relates to the building would be heat, lights, and utilities. I mean, there's not gonna be a significant increase as a result of the building.
Mr. Postel.
I think a collateral sort of answering question to go with what Mr. Fishbein was just asking is, I believe what you're saying is, once the building's built, there'll be an incremental cost in light and heat and stuff, but nothing really huge. However, the collateral question of what additional expenses, whether they're gonna be, is what savings are there gonna be? We've mentioned being able to do more in-house work. But the one that comes to mind to me is, as a former professional mechanic, the single best thing you can do for a machine, a car, a truck, a backhoe, anything, anything mechanical, is stored indoors. And I'd be willing to bet a lot of the Highway Department stuff lives outside right now. And I would expect if we had the bigger facility, more of it would live indoors. And that one thing will do so much to improve the longevity and serviceability of the equipment. And that's something you can't really put a price on until you look 20 years down the road. How often did we have to replace the backhoe or whatever? So there's intangibles on both sides, but I think overall it's gonna be a winner.
And so that I'm clear, when we discuss and decide whether or not we're gonna hire a mechanic, and we're not there yet, my expectation would be that it would be a wash. Because it's not gonna be justifiable for us to come to you and tell you that it's time to hire a mechanic unless there could be a corresponding cut in the amount that we're currently spending to outside garages. So I don't see a net increase. It's certainly not something we're gonna propose. If, when we do the math, it's gonna cost us $80,000 to hire a mechanic to only save $50,000, we're not gonna ask you for that. If, however, it's gonna cost us $80,000 to save $100,000, we will be back. And I would hope you would expect us to be.
Mr. Harriman.
Yeah, one of the things we haven't brought up yet either is, y'all got a lot of the crew here and stuff, a lot of your folks have been down there in the wintertime. When we're prepped up for a storm, and those trucks are parked inside with all the plows on and everything, it's amazing to see how these guys who, it's like a jigsaw puzzle, get everything put in there. And you literally cannot walk from one side of the garage to the other side without climbing over a plow frame or a plow or something like that. So all these other aspects of looking at this is from a safety standpoint, too, to, you know, get the room to actually put everything away in there in a safe manner. And if anything, like, right now, if anything did happen in there as far as, you know, go off a bit of fire like that, you could not get anything out of there 'cause you're one piece at a time to unlock the jigsaw puzzle. Whereas, there's no garage here. Every piece of machinery would have its own door to be able to, you know, get access straight in and out. And it would be much safer and a place for everything for the crew to work in down there at the same time.
Mr. Brothers.
Do you have a cost of what it has cost the town over the past year or two on outside maintenance? Do you have a figure?
I don't have one here.
I don't have it right here, but we can provide that. It's, I mean, in my budget alone, I carry $80,000 for repairs and maintenance in our line item for the Highway Department. And I know we carry about $10,000 in the transfer station. So there's, you know, my two departments here, there's $90,000 that we spend right there. And a portion of that does go for outside services to, you know, Peterbilt for the garage or the reasons we send the trucks all out now for inspections and stuff, which we could do in-house, you know, in the future if that did come to that point, as Rick has said.
Any other discussion or questions relative to Article IV? Yes, sir.
Jeff Logender. I'm just curious, what would the impact be on the tax rate? Like you said earlier, if we're not careful, what we add to the budget, what would be the impact if you got able to pay for the grants and cash if you moved it to here?
When I spoke earlier, if this whole warrant passes intact, the way it's printed, the amount that we're going to raise by taxation is $4,000 less than last year. So the quick answer is, passing this will not raise your taxes one penny. Having said that, if you do vote it down, you would have a tax decrease because there'd be about $300,000 that wouldn't be approved. I personally don't think that would be wise. I think it's a needed addition, and I think it's at a good price. It's at a good time when we could do it without raising taxes.
Mr. Emmerich.
Have you looked at any other buildings in the area that might be cheaper for us to buy, maybe fix to this, to sit in the town garage?
There's only one other building in the immediate area, and that's Joe Egan's building up behind the Independent. We did look at it. It is not tall enough to put in a lift, which completely negates any of the reason that we're doing this to begin with. I can tell you that if you were to build a completely new highway garage, you would be looking at it a whole lot more than $494,000.
That's what my next thing is. We're only at $178,000 in a fund for this garage. Why are we jumping so stupidly now, then? If we are waiting to do that anyway?
I don't think I understood that.
Well, we've got $179,000 set aside, and we put $30,000, that's what we're asking for, set aside in this reserve fund for this town garage, right? We've been doing it for several years now, putting money aside for this. Okay, so why are we doing it this year instead of waiting another year or two when we have more money in this reserve?
Well, because this year was an opportune time with the money that we have saved on the ambulance contract. It was an opportunity to do it this year, a project that we've been planning on now for seven years, without raising the taxes. We could do it any year. We could do it next year. If you lowered it $300,000 this year and we come back next year, it would go up by $300,000. It was an opportune time to do it at a time when we could do it without raising taxes.
Well, that's fine, just need a clarification.
Mr. Brenner.
Brenner, Water Village. I built a garage 25 years ago, 1990. Started in '89. I built it out of cement blocks, two bays, two deep. So it takes three, two, three vehicles, easy. And working around it, 10-foot doors, that's all. It was $90,000. Okay? It's not a town garage, it's a working garage. I got a lift in it, I got a 14-foot ceiling in it. And it cost me, I used regular furnace oil. And I averaged about 12 gallons a day on 24 hours. Very economical insulation. So I don't know what you complain about a garage. It's very worthwhile. It's a big money saver. It's all your equipment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this article? Mr. Emmerich?
I'd just like to say we won't complain, and we were just asking.
All right. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. We will move on to Article V to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $250,000 for the purpose of repair and improvements of town roads, recommended by both the Selectman and the Budget Committee. Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Reins.
Brad, can you just give us a highlights of what roads you're gonna spend it on this year?
Mr. Harriman.
Yes, we plan on doing the balance of Moltenville Road, which is about 3,100 feet to grind and pave that road, or also put some other drains in. And then we also plan on spending the balance, depending on how the budget comes in for the paving bids on, so I could apply a lot of shims on Chickville Road as that's starting to get some spots in it that need to be addressed. Expecting Chickville Road to take about two years, between this year and next year, to get that roadway completely done there to get it up to standard.
Any other questions on Article V? Mr. Morgan?
Also point out that that is normally $350,000 that we raise every year. We did reduce that to $250,000 this year, again, in order to be able to do the town garage without raising taxes. So another year, that would probably go back up. We normally spend $350,000.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
John Idison, West Oscepi. The bridge project for Dan Valley Road, is that in this $250,000?
No. We have only two red-listed bridges left. The money to deal with those is completely already contained in the Capital Reserve account of monies that we've raised in previous years. Both of those will be done this year with money that's already there.
Excellent.
Any other questions? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Moving on to Article VI to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $30,000 to be added to the Highway Equipment Capital Reserve Fund previously established, recommended by both the Selectman and the Budget Committee? Thank you. And a second? Thank you. Any discussion on Article VI? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Article VII to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 for the purpose of town-building improvements, the town hall, freight house, highway garage, library, and police station, recommended by the Selectman and the Budget Committee? Thank you. And a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article VII? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Article VIII to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000 to be added to the Solid Waste Facility Capital Reserve Fund previously established, recommended by both the Selectman and the Budget Committee? It's been moved? And seconded? Is there any discussion on Article VIII? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Moving on to Article IX to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $34,700 for the purpose of purchasing one new police cruiser and equipment. This amount to come from the town's unreserved fund balance, the surplus, and no amount is to be raised through taxation. This is recommended by both the Selectman and the Budget Committee? It's been moved? And seconded? Is there any discussion on this article? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you.
May I not reconsider Article IV through nine?
There's been a motion to not reconsider Articles IV through nine. And a second? All those in favor? All those opposed? We will not reconsider Articles now three through nine. Well, one through nine, really. Moving on to Article X to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,400 for the purpose of purchasing new computer software, training, and computer backup for the police department. This is recommended by the Selectman and the Budget Committee? It has been moved?
Second.
And seconded? Is there any discussion on this article? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Moving on to Article XI to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $58,830 for the purpose of paying the Ospey Water Systems bond payment for one year, recommended by the Selectman and the Budget Committee? It's been moved? And seconded? Is there any discussion on Article XI? Mr. Reins.
Can anybody remind me how much longer this goes on?
She's looking it up. I think it turned around 15 years.
15 years left?
It was renegotiated. You might remember that the amount was actually quite a bit more than that. It was renegotiated. Martha, help me out. 2024 is the last. Eight years.
Any further discussion or questions on Article XI? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Article XII to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 to be added to the revaluation Capital Reserve account previously established for the purpose of a complete revaluation of the town in the year 2020. This is recommended by both the Selectman and the Budget Committee. And it has been moved? And seconded? Is there discussion on Article XII? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Article XIII to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,000 to be added to the benefit pay expendable trust fund previously established. This is recommended by both the Selectman and the Budget Committee? It has been moved? And seconded? Is there any discussion on Article XIII? Yes, sir. Mr. Logender.
Oh, I just wanna know what that is, benefit pay.
Okay. Mr. Morgan?
When employees separate from the town, particularly when they retire, what happens is that the final buyout is taken out of this Capital Reserve account. The alternative would be, when somebody retires, we wouldn't be able to fill their position sometimes for many weeks. So this far, there's an overlap of salaries and benefits so that we don't have to wait to refill positions when somebody retires.
Any questions or discussion? Mr. Emmerich, do you have a question?
No, I'm talking myself.
Okay. If you have a question, Mel.
I guess, I know that you guys spent, there's like $57,000 in that trust now. And you spent like $18,000 this last year already. So are you just trying to put that $18,000 back in?
For lack of a better term, yes. But we try to gauge how many employees we have which are currently eligible to retire. But we try to gauge how many employees we have which are currently eligible to retire, and if they all retire, what impact that would have on the budget.
So you're expecting us spending a lot of money?
I can tell you, and I don't know if David is here, but a zoning officer is retiring the 1st of April. So there's one. There are a couple of more people who have the age and the years to retire if they chose to, so.
So it's just back.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion on Article 13? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,000 to be added to the Invasive Species Control Fund previously established for the purpose of preventing and treating millfoil in Ospee Lake. This is recommended by the Selectman 3 to 0 and recommended by the Budget Committee 5 to 1. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 14? Yes, sir, Mr. Hall.
Now, is this to hand-pull this exotic millfoil, or is this to poison the lake? Does anyone know?
Mr. Morgan.
I'll take it. It's both. No, let's just, last year, there was not any hand-pulling. It was all done with herbicide. The plan that we have for this year does both. The $3,000 is bringing, is putting it back into the Capital Reserve Fund to make up for what we spent this past year. The new contract coming up, we're getting a $13,000 grant, and...
We have a 75-25.
It's a 75-25 match. So we have to come up with 25% of it, and the state's going to pay 75%.
But we have to raise the money to accept it back in grant funds.
Did you know the name of the pesticide, I mean, the herbicide?
The same one you haven't liked for years. And it's the only one, it's the only one that D E S has approved to kill millfoil.
And stall children and pets.
Is there any further questions or discussion relative to Article 14? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you.
We will reconsider Articles 10 through 14.
There is a motion to not reconsider Articles 10 through 14. There's a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. We will not reconsider Articles 10 through 14. Moving on to Article 15, to see if the town will vote to accept a donation from the Chickville Cemetery Association, Incorporated, consisting of three parcels of real estate. The first being Tax Map 231 Lot 12, consisting of land and a building known commonly as the Chickville Church or Chickville Meeting House, and a second and third being Tax Map 108 Lot 18 and Tax Map 231 Lot 2, consisting of land known commonly as the Chickville Cemetery. The donation shall be subject to the right of those families who have relatives interred in the cemeteries or who own cemetery lots to use the Chickville Church Meeting House for memorial services and other functions, subject to the reasonable limitations imposed by the town for use of town-owned buildings. This is recommended by the Selectman. It's been moved and it has been seconded. Is there discussion relative to this article? Mr. Brothers.
What sort of shape? Is this building in, is it worth us, the town taking over this?
Absolutely. Let me give you a little bit of real quick history here. First of all, the town of Ospee is very nearly out of cemetery space. When I say nearly out, we have one lot remaining in the Route 171 cemetery, and literally a handful in the Grant Hill Cemetery. One of the most serious responsibilities we have, we've been trying to find a way we were going to have another cemetery. We were approached by the Chickville Church Association this past fall. I attended a meeting, brought back to the board, and this is what is come out of it. They would be donating to us the entire cemetery. There are 456 empty available lots in that cemetery. That will take care of the town cemetery needs for a considerable period of time. In addition, their association has existed for two things. One, to run a cemetery, and two, to protect the Chickville Church slash Meeting House. It's a beautiful old building, which is in very good shape. In addition to them taking it over, or giving us rather, this cemetery and building, in the next article that we're going to deal with, we're going to raise some money to put into a Capital Reserve account, they are donating to us $21,642.55 of funds that they had left for the care of the building. It's a, quite frankly, a win-win. We need a cemetery, and we had a group of folks who decided they wanted to give us a cemetery. I literally would predict, if this were not to pass, and we were to try to establish a cemetery at the same size, we'd be talking about spending a quarter of a million dollars. It's a win-win.
Yes, sir, Mr. Howard.
To the Selectmen. Is the, any consideration as to what the costs are going to be for maintaining the cemetery itself, not the building, and whether or not funds are going to have to be taken from other things during the course of this upcoming year if it's not already budgeted into the current budget?
It is already budgeted. It was already budgeted into the current budget. We put $4,500 in additional money in the cemetery trustees' budget, and going forward, some of the money that is generated from the sale of lots will go to help Ospee be added costs of maintenance.
Thank you.
Mr. Fisto.
Phil Fisto, Center Ospee. Am I reading this correct, that only if you have a family member buried in the cemetery or own a lot that you can use the building?
I'm glad you asked that question, and the answer is no. One of the things that was brought back to us and went back to our attorney in the portion of, in the process of negotiating this transfer, is there was concern of some of the membership that they might not be able to use the old church building. So they asked that this line should be included. We didn't think it was necessary, but we chose to include it to make them feel better. Because once it is a town-owned building, anybody can use it. There is a process, the same way as somebody wants to use Town Hall or the Freight House, they come in, they fill out a form, they give us, they request the dates. We run a schedule to make sure that it's not a conflict. You put down a deposit, so that you make sure it's clean when you leave, so anybody would be able to use it for a church, or a wedding, or a funeral, or whatever.
I'd like to, I'd like to add a comment here for the, if Rick and I sold the amount of lots that Ward and I sold three years ago that'd be a waiting list for lots, we are that shy of lots right now.
It's not good when you have a waiting list for cemetery lots.
I just, to make a point that this does not go through, we will be out of lots in a second.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Mr. Gillett.
Bob Gillett. I can understand why it makes sense to accept the donation of the cemetery. It's less clear to me why it makes sense to the town to accept the donation of the historic building, which will then be responsible for maintaining. Does this set a precedent for accepting responsibility for other historic buildings in town? The courthouse, two churches, and granted, the National Register of Historic Places?
If town meeting's so approved, then yes. I mean, I don't think, there's no precedent. There's certainly going to not be any requirement that you accept a future building. I think that the building, in this particular case, went hand-in-hand with the cemetery, because the association used the revenue from the cemetery lots to support the building. Now, as to preserving historic buildings, I would remind you that we're just finishing up spending almost a million dollars to preserve a covered bridge in West Ospee. This town has a long tradition of protecting our heritage, and that is a beautiful old building. It is in generally very good repair. I think that the money that is in, going to be raised in this account, is going to be adequate to, you know, to take care of it. I, again, I consider it to be a win-win. Would I like the cemetery without some added responsibility? Of course I would. But this is a, quite frankly, a package deal where they were using the revenue from the cemetery lots to maintain the church.
No, there's no question of the importance of maintaining historic places. Fortunately for the bridge, there were substantial federal funds, grant funds available, which are not available, unfortunately, for preserving buildings like this. So I wondered if you've done a forward study of what the maintenance costs will look like over the next five to 10 years of this structure? Can you tell us what those might be?
We can only tell you what they've been spending, and they've been basically painting one side a year, so that every fifth year, it is completely painted, and they've been spending between $2,000 and $3,000 per year to do that.
Okay. So the $21,000 gift, looks like it may cover anywhere from five to 10 years of making these costs.
And it would be our intention, much like we do with the millfoil account, it would be our recommendation that if we spend $2,000 next year on the building, that we put $2,000 back in that account, as a means of perpetually counting for that building. It is a very historic building, and I think it's a wonderful thing to protect.
No questions. Thank you.
Any other discussion on Article 15? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. If this passes. Moving on to Article 16, to see if the town will vote to approve the establishment of an expendable trust fund under the provisions of RSA 3119A, to be known as the Chickville Church Meeting House Maintenance Expendable Trust Fund for the purpose of providing maintenance and repairs to the Chickville Church Meeting House property, Tax Map 231 Lot 12, and to vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $21,160 to be added to this fund, and to appoint the Board of Selectmen as agents to expend. This is recommended by the Selectman and by the Budget Committee 5 to 1. It has been moved and seconded. Is there discussion on Article 16?
I'd like to amend the article.
You'd like to amend the article. Do we have that amendment in writing?
Do not. It just has a different dollar amount.
Okay. What would the new dollar amount be?
We'd like to amend the dollar amount to $21,642.55 with expenditure.
$21,642.55. There has been a motion to amend the dollar amount to $21,642.55. There's been a second. Is there any discussion on this amendment? As in, would you like to explain why?
I would. The Chickville, again, their association and part of this negotiating, us taking it over, agreed to donate whatever they had left in their funds, in their account, to the town. So the amount, and they've given us checks, which they've already got here tonight, a total of $21,642.55. We have to raise that amount, but this will be deposited tomorrow and show as a revenue on the other side.
Is there any further discussion on the amendment? So now we are not voting on the article, we are just voting to amend the dollar amount to $21,642.55. It's already, no, it's seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. We will now discuss Article 16 as amended. Is there any further discussion on this article? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. This passes as amended. We'll move to Article 17, to see if the town will vote to modify the provisions of RSA 7239A for elderly exemption from property tax in the town of Ospee, based on assessed value for qualified taxpayers to be as follows. For a person 65 years of age up to 74 years, $50,000. For a person 75 years of age up to 79 years, $75,000. For a person 80 years of age or older, $100,000. To qualify, the person must have been a New Hampshire resident for at least three consecutive years, own the real estate individually or jointly, or if the real estate is owned by such person's spouse, they must have been married to each other for at least five consecutive years. In addition, the taxpayer must have a net income of not more than $28,000, or if married, a combined net income of less than $39,000, and own net assets not in excess of $60,000, excluding the value of the person's residence. This is recommended both by the Selectman and the Budget Committee. It has been moved and seconded. Is there discussion on Article 17? Yes, sir.
Jake Dawson. Are we encouraging old people to fill up our cemetery? Is that what we're doing here? I'm trying to understand this. I mean, we've got a brand-new cemetery, and we're trying to fill it up.
Actually, the reverse is true.
Okay.
This, the town of Ospee currently has this same article already in place with lesser amounts. We did an analysis of what the impact would be on our revenue, and quite frankly, it's very small, but the positive impact that this could have on some of our most vulnerable elderly could be significant. What this is saying to you is, if you live to be those ages, and you have that small amount of money, we're not going to take what little bit you've got for property taxes. I think it's a wonderful thing to do for some of the most vulnerable people in our town, and the net debt to the town is very small.
And then the savings, or the people saving, the towns increase in liability with then following the other property taxpayers, correct?
Absolutely correct.
Is there further discussion or questions on Article 17? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you.
Do you not reconsider Articles 15 through 17?
There is a motion to not reconsider Articles 15 through 17. It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. We will not reconsider these articles. Moving on to Article 18, to see if the town will vote to abolish effective January 1st, 2017, the Ospee Water and Sewer Department, originally established pursuant to Article 15 of the 1997 Annual Town Meeting, and to transfer control of all the Ospee Water and Sewer Commissioners' duties and responsibilities to the Ospee Board of Selectmen effective January 1st, 2017. This is recommended both by the Board of Selectmen and by the Budget Committee. It has been moved and it has been seconded. I will tell you now that this will be a secret ballot vote. I will also say that if we are going to have a lengthy discussion on it, I ask that you refer to the guidelines and make sure that your comments are unique and original, as I do not want to spend an excessive amount of time rehashing old arguments. So if anybody wishes to speak to Article 18? Oh, sorry, Mr. Morgan.
Oh, you. This is probably going to be one of the more lengthy discussions maybe of the night. Many of you were handed a sheet when you came in the building tonight, and many of you will have seen an article in the Conway Daily, in the Independent last week, and as Paul Harvey might say, here's the rest of the story. There have been several incidents, and first, let me preface one other thing. I don't want anything that I say tonight to be any ill-reflection on June Ladd, who is 95 years old and has served this town admirably for years and years and years. I met with her as late as yesterday, and we both laughingly remembered that if it had been five or 10 years ago, she'd have given some people holy old hell over this, and she would have. But there have been a series of incidents over the last two years that have brought us to a point where this board, not Rick Morgan individually, I assure you, anybody that knows Frank Rowley and Bob Freeman, they're not wallflowers. This is a unanimous decision to bring this before you. There have been a series of events that have occurred which caused us an awful lot of concern. It does in fact start, as is pointed out in Ski's letter, by the resignation of Doug Sargent and the way in which that that was handed, which resulted in the town of Ospee being sued, not the Water and Sewer Commission, the town of Ospee. We need to remember that the town of Ospee owns the water system Lock, Stock, and Barrel. 25 years ago, I was one of the signers of the petition and took the responsibilities away from the water, the Water Department, and created the Water Commission, under the hope that the people on the water system would be making decisions about issues that affected just then. And it worked for a good many years, and I would submit to you that it's no longer working. Furthermore, for the first time, we now have not one single person on the commission who's on the Water Department at all, and haven't had. Jill was the last one, and she no longer retired. I don't know what she's doing. She's only 95 years old. Ski had put in his letter, and again, in his handout, that that lawsuit didn't cost the town anything, and that's not true. We've spent thousands of dollars with our own attorneys. We've had staff which had to pull documents for the other attorneys. Never mind the fact that it's not good enough to say, well, that's why we have insurance, because when insurance companies pay our claims that have been found against you, they tend to raise your rates. There was an assertion made that two years ago, the now director of the DRA attended a meeting and said that the Water Department did not have to participate in the budget process. That is flat, not true. It is a lie. I have been to every single one of those budget meetings for the last two years, and that never occurred. On the contrary, and I believe the chairman of the Budget Committee will back me on this, they have it in writing from DRA and the Attorney General's Office that the Water and Sewer Department must participate in the budget process. The more important part of that entire question is, why wouldn't they want to? That Budget Committee that sits over there are your elected representatives. What makes the Water and Sewer Department think that they should not participate in the budget process and have the same review that every other department budget has every year? Why is that a fight? There have been incidences where this board has had pretty strong disagreements, one of which was when we discovered that we were being billed $28,000 for $2,000 worth of water. In addition to the actual fee for the water that we were using, which is metered, there was an arbitrary $25,000 administrative fee put on the taxpayers. I don't know why. It was there. The commission can claim credit for taking it off, and they did. They took it off after we passed a motion that we would have charged them $25,000 rent for the town-owned building that they're in. It worked. Recently, at the end of last budget year, suspiciously, in an invoice dated 12/31, they went and bought a new pickup truck. They argue in the article and in this paper that they're handing out, that they've been saving money up, and that's why we were able to go buy a truck. That would make you think that, much like the Capital Reserve Accounts that we talked about earlier, that they've been setting money aside in the Capital Reserve Account, and it's time to buy a truck. That's not true. There was no money we've taken out of any Capital Reserve Account for that purchase, which leads you to believe that they had nearly $40,000 left in their operating budget. The way that they chose to dispose of the other vehicle, the one that they had, was an advertisement in the Conway Daily Sun, in a $6 advertisement, it was about this bid. Surprisingly, they only got one, they only got one bid, and they sold that vehicle to one of their own employees for $150. The fact of the matter is, the appearance of impropriety is just as bad as impropriety when you're talking about taxpayer funds. I don't have a strong feeling, one way or the other, how you both decided to throw it. If you pass it, thanks to being re-elected yesterday, we've got more work to do. We as a board, and I am the de facto spokesman as chairman, we as a board felt it was important to shine a flashlight on what we believe is a problem. This board has been very conscious of being extremely transparent. We have the most comprehensive and complete minutes of any board I know of, thanks to the able hands of our town administrator. Our meetings are videotaped and watched some weeks by as many as 300 people. There was nothing, there was nothing conducted that's not in the light of day. I have serious concerns about the conduct of two of the three commissioners which have been on that water system for some time. If it passes, the reason we put in for January of 2017 is we didn't want to try to take over midstream. Our thoughts were, if the townspeople decided that this is what they wanted to do, that we would make it effective of January 2017, and then we would be operating on a clean and a new budget. Past that, I think I'll leave it at that for now, but there are some problems that need to be addressed, and we felt it was our responsibility to bring it to you and shine a light on it and let you decide.
Mr. Riley.
Not only supporting what Rick has had to say here this evening, there's one other issue that clearly needs to be brought forward. This system has not operated on used fees. Your school system here in Center Ospee is being assessed $30,000 a year as we speak, in addition to paying for the water sewer that they use. I discussed... I discussed this as recently as last Monday with the Superintendent's Office. They filed an appeal with the commissioners on the ninth day of September, is when they mailed it to the commissioners. And as of this date, they have not received any response from the water commissioners as to whether this appeal for an abatement will be accepted or rejected. Now, these fees have been charged for a long time. They go back beyond the commissioners that you're having in the system as we speak today. We, as taxpayers, have paid thousands of dollars in addition to the people who are on the system paying user fees. The second thing you have to ask yourself, are the people on the system themselves capable financially of paying for the total operation of that system? We have a fair amount of retired people. We have the opportunity that some of these people could very well have a higher water sewer bill than a tax bill. And I think that needs to be looked at seriously. This system, I don't believe, can operate off water sewer usage all by itself. And I think it's going to take help from all of us as a complete town and citizens within our town. But as their system has been collecting sixty thousand dollars a year up until last fall, over and above the user sewer fees. Right now, the school district is getting ready to challenge this with my discussion with them. Unfortunately, they can't challenge it the way we did it at Selectmen because they are mentoring the buildings or letting them use their buildings. But there are things, and I know your commissioners, and I would very much expect them to defend themselves. But I was the last holdout on this board for putting this article on the warrant, mainly because I felt the system belonged to the people. But I seriously think that people need help from all of us. We cannot afford to have this system go down and have three hundred and fifty people with no water or sewer. And I think we need a chance to sit back. We need to look at it. We need to evaluate it. These people need to pay a reasonable fee. And I think as citizens of our community, we need to do our best to help them. And I very much support what Rick has gone through here this evening. And I very much support and hope you will vote to turn this back to Selectmen January first, two thousand seventeen. Thank you.
I'm going to make a few words, and you can talk. But I agree, I've been working with Rick on this for a couple of years. He's talking about what is going on, and it's ridiculous. We do need to do something about it. So I would urge you to vote for the Selectmen to take it back over. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Some of you may remember, ten or fifteen years ago, or twenty, Rick said twenty-five. I don't know. I'm so old I can't remember that one. Anyway, when this first came about, I was one of the people who recommended that it be, along with Rick, I guess, recommended that we have a separate commission. And that worked well for a while. But I will tell you that in the last year since I've been here, I have seen some things evolve. For example, one thing is that there are no capital reserves or anything, but the checkbook, which I balanced yesterday, has an excess of two hundred thousand dollars that which can be spent at will. And that doesn't seem right to me. It seems like it ought to be in some kind of a capital reserve. Also, looking at this from a long-term perspective, at some point in time, there are going to have to be some major expansions or some major fixes to this water system. The Water Department can't handle this. And I have no reflection at all on the people who work there. I think they're fine. I think they do a good job. I just think it's time to bring this all back and consolidate it and get it in one place where we can keep control of it and see what's going on. Thank you.
Mr. Goss?
Yes, I'd like to speak about the issue as far as the Budget Committee's power over the precincts and also the Water Department. It has been a battle for many years. The Water Department, some of the precincts have said they don't have to come before the Budget Committee. It finally came to a head a year ago. We got a letter from DRA and Municipal Association, this state, and it is in the statutes that those precincts and the Water Department, as long as they are solely within the bounds of the town of Ospey, must come before this Budget Committee. There is no choice. Unless they want to form their own Budget Committee. That's the only way for them to help. And they do not have their own Budget Committee. So the statement that was made in that letter is truly false. And I have to back Rick a hundred percent that it was never, the DRA never came to one of our meetings. That's it.
If I could add just one quick thing.
Yeah, Mr. Morgan?
And I should have added before. I want it very clear that this board has absolutely no problem with the employees of the Water Department, nor any plans or intentions to change it. The new hires that are there are good, qualified people. We have no issue with them, and it's not about that. It's about the administration.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes. This has been debated over a period of probably six weeks or two months in the newspapers. And I don't want to get into a long debate again. One thing about, a few points here. There was a person from the DRA attending the Budget Committee. And I have it on record. That meeting was taped. And I do have his voice on tape if you'd like to listen to it at any one time. It might not affect the vote tonight, but I do have it on tape. As far as the fees, excessive fees, these fees were fees that were put into effect years and years ago. And just recently is when they've been questioned, and those fees were resolved by the present commission. As far as the old truck that was sold, it was not running. It actually blew the engine right in the town parking lot when he was getting gas. So the price of a hundred and fifty dollars was for junk. And it was advertised. As far as the amount of money spent for the new truck, there had been in the past two years money set aside in a line item. And when the present truck needed to be purchased, it was purchased with that line item money, which was set aside prior. And we had to add a little money from another line item, which the commissioners have authority to do. As far as the budget's concerned, if you'll notice, the budget has been dropped twelve thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars this year. And it'll be dropped as we go along hopefully more. We did save a lot of money last year because of going out of the town to purchase fuel oil. The price of fuel oil from the town was over a dollar a gallon higher than on the outside. Now, that was a situation where the Selectmen negotiated a contract with a fixed rate, I believe, as opposed to a varying price at the terminal. We do have a new commissioner who's been voted in and hopefully will be able to refine the operations more so than they have been. But there's been a process where the running of the department and the way things were set up needed to be improved. One of the items that we did was to institute a purchasing policy. Prior to, three years ago, there was no purchasing policy in effect. So we asked the water selectmen if we could use their purchasing policy as a model, which we did. And we just edited it to suit our amount of money that we expend. Now, the town has millions of dollars which they expend. Our budget is in a neighborhood of three hundred and ninety to four hundred thousand dollars. So we had to adjust the purchasing policy to fit that amount. And we have voted at the last meeting to adjust the water and sewer billing for the school. That was voted up. In fact, we voted on giving them a vacant over the next six billing periods to straighten out the billing, which actually part of the billing was a computer error where it just added on the water onto the basic price. But that's been corrected. And they will be, of course, notified of that. So I think that in the light of smaller government instead of bigger government, I think that this article should be voted no. Thank you.
Mr. Levitt?
I apologize for speaking as much tonight. I don't usually do that. Then I got thinking, I'm setting Zebra and I might not be able to speak next to you. It's always like to come to town hall and see people you haven't seen for years, but they always say, gee, you're looking good. You know they're lying. I always tell them I must be looking in the wrong mirror. I hope not to get into this, really. And I didn't want to. I have terribly strong feelings about this. I'm not going to get into it. Katie is pretty clueless prior to situations pretty much, and I'm not going to get into that. But I will say this. I've never seen an employee of this town treated so egregiously and unfairly as Commissioner Frontalsey did. Now, if he wants to debate this, I'll be happy to debate it whether. Having said that, I want to say something about Bo because the Selectmen have. Bo is a great guy. I have no question, but he's an excellent employee. He comes from a hard-working family. I'm very happy he got to employment. I can't question that. I could go on. I don't want to go on because this is really an emotional subject to me, but I will debate it. It comes to that. However, I'd like to select, I'd like to suggest that the Selectmen have made a great case for the town to take it over. And I'd like to make a motion that we consider adopting what the Selectmen would like to do, if that's appropriate. Is there probably a doubt at this time?
We already have a motion on the floor to deal with Article eighteen, which is to take over the water sewer commissions. Are you suggesting a different?
That would be my motion, yes.
Okay, it is already so moved and seconded.
Okay. Any more discussion with the both?
Is there any further discussion? Mr. Gillette and then Mr. Deegan.
Thank you. I'm not accustomed to the water and sewer system. I know less about it than I probably should. But I just wanted to pick up on one point that was made in the articles that the Selectmen mentioned. At any time, have the Selectmen had a detailed discussion, systematic discussion of the issues you raised here tonight with the commission itself face-to-face? Have you tried to work out these issues with them, listened to their responses or not? If so, when and how did it go?
It didn't go very well at all. We have had-
So it didn't happen?
We have had several discussions. In particular, Ski used to come to every Monday night Selectmen's meeting. I find it funny now that he decries the fact that we had no communication. But he used to come and we used to have continued discussions. We had serious problems in addition to the ones that I outlined earlier over one of their hirings, where they did defy by state law in doing a background check. And we had to get the town attorney involved in order to make that happen. The fact of the matter is, we have not found any cooperation. Have we discussed the dissolution with them? Absolutely not. We invited them to come to a meeting last Monday night where we were going to have the public a chance to answer any questions they might have, and they declined to attend. The communications have not been great. The fact of the matter is, the instances that I have outlined are what they are. We have said that this is a problem. And we are notifying you of that problem. And we believe that this is a solution to that problem. I dispute and disagree with virtually everything that Ski has said. And I believe that our meetings are completely taped. And anybody who has watched them will know what the proof is.
So it's only last Monday night that you proposed a full discussion with the commission?
No, no. Each one of these items that I have talked with you, we have discussed with the Selectmen, with the block commission as they have. Will, I don't think is even here. I think he's living in Toul.
Mr. Kowalski, I have recognized Mr. Deegan behind you to go next.
Hey, my name's Joe. Joe Deegan, I live in Center Ospey. I am on the water. The water and sewer, as well as where we all are. A lot of it goes blame to us too, because a lot of people, including myself, don't attend the meetings. But there has been a lot of things going on there. But I have a question about the procedure of the dissolution of it. Because my understanding is that the water precinct acts like a fire precinct effectively. So it is town-run now as it says?
It's a funky thing. There's three ways that it can be done. The town has it, which it did. You can create a commission, which they then have the same powers as the Selectmen, but only over issues of water and sewer. Or it could become a completely separate district like a precinct, its own district. One of the things we look at, quite frankly, because then if there was a district and only people who are on the system could run for office and only people on the system could vote. The problem with that is the system would collapse on itself. Right now, the town is underwriting everything that the Water and Sewer Department does. And let me give you this example. They do the billing for water and sewer. It is collected at the tax collector's office. We give them their full appropriation on a monthly basis, and then we wait maybe up to three years for people to pay their water bills. So you are already in the water business, whether you wanted to be or not, lock, stock, and barrel.
Because I asked this question from the Water Department themselves in the past, and it isn't the recent crew that are there. And my understanding was that they have the ability to purchase and buy whatever they wanted under their own system setup. And I was kind of told that, well, I was told that, and the way that I interpreted it was that they were under the assumption, or the way they operated, is that they were their own entity, just like their own little town, just like the fire precinct. So that's not the case at all now, or since nineteen ninety-seven? Because that came in because Roland retired and then we went to the commissioners somehow.
And these are the same people that have said for years that they don't have to participate in the budget process, and they are wrong.
Well, I-
They're wrong. It is a town department. The employees that are over there are town of Ospey employees. They collect their paychecks through our payroll. It is a town department. The only difference is currently, and for the last twenty-five years, is that Board of Commissioners exercises the same control as the Selectmen would. Literally, the only change when it comes to the employees that this were to pass is January of two thousand seventeen, they would answer to three Selectmen instead of three commissions.
Okay. May I ask another question?
Yes.
Thank you. So how is the... Because right now supposedly it's funded by the people that are on the system. Is that basically going to remain the same?
For the most part. But what you just said is basically, it hasn't been. There have been these administrative fees, one of which was thirty thousand dollars on the school, twenty-five thousand dollars on the town. We already have been underwriting the bond payment. It's an article you passed a little bit earlier. So the premise that it has ever been completely supported by the water users is a fallacy. Now, as Frank said-
But go ahead.
As Frank said, part of what needs to happen is there obviously needs to be a look at what people pay for water bill and what they can fairly afford. How that will actually shake itself, I don't know.
But will it remain within the people that are on the system, such as the schools, such as the fire department, has been taxed twice over the years, as far as water, if you look at it that way?
They also pay fifteen thousand dollars to rent the hydrants.
That's what I'm talking about, yes. Since January, right.
Twenty-seven thousand, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's a lot of money. It's been going on for years. So is it still going to be distributed by the users of the water instead of the whole town? So is it still going to be distributed by the users of the water instead of the whole town dealing with it? Because the whole town deals with the payment of the loan, but it's still funded via the people on the water department.
But as I said, Joe, it hasn't been. The $25,000, just as an example, we pointed out to you, $60,000 in arbitrary fees which were added on, which we all, every taxpayer has been paying.
Well, that's through the use of the school and all that.
And the town.
And the town, right. Which makes sense, because the town is part of the water. The town draws, this town building, the big buildings on it draw water from the system.
I understand, but I...
Whether it's charge rate or on, this draws on water from the system.
Charge rate and loan, they were charging us $21,000.
And I'm not saying that that number is correct, wrong, or whatever, but I'm, you know what I'm trying to say? I mean, it's not going to be distributed throughout the whole town. The cost of the water system, it'll, it'll...
Joe, you're still going to be charged a bill for your water.
No, right, I know that, yeah.
I think I get what you're trying to say.
It is and it's not.
Predominantly, yes, but it hasn't been that way right along. Can I sit here and say to you that categorically every penny of it will be? No, I can't. Because, be honest with you, we have not had any real good participation. The selectmen don't even get to see the budget until it goes to the Budget Committee. So we don't have, we don't have any oversight. I don't have any way of saying to you whether, I mean, if they had a bunch of money left over enough to buy a truck, it seems to me that there might be some room in there to cut some money.
I agree. Just I'm not sure.
I think, I think at this point, our issue is who is going to determine how the water sewer commission is run? Is it going to be the commissioners? Is it going to be the selectmen? I don't think they can tell you how they're going to run it until they actually run it. Mr. Brothers.
I live in West Osiphe. Is this on?
Yeah.
I live in West Osiphe. I'm not on this water system. But the taxes that I pay to the town pays for the water system. A portion of my taxes that I pay to the town pays to cover this water system. Am I correct?
Yes.
When this water system and sewer was first put in, it was, to my knowledge, it was supposed to be able to have the users would control all the money or paying for it. Am I correct on that?
You're half correct. The problem with that is the whole town voted on it. If only the water and sewer users had voted on it, it never would have passed. None of us wanted it. They literally put in a few...
I know, I didn't want it, because I had to put my own will in, my own septic system.
Well, we didn't want it, because they would, they literally borrowed $3 million, the 350 of us was going to be responsible for paying back. So we didn't want it either.
So part of my taxes, where I live in West Osiphe, and the only use that I would have of this is this town building and my kids going to the school, was that money from my taxes pays for this water and sewer?
Not in the sense that it's a portion of it, yes.
Okay, that's all I want.
Mr. Reins.
Thank you. I think what Joe was trying to get at, and I'm sure you probably can't answer it tonight, but is if we lose the ratepayers, of which sadly I'm one, if they're, lose $30,000 from the school, $25 from the, here, $27,000 from the fire department, and all of a sudden there's $100,000 less of income, are the ratepayers now, the 350 people, including those three that are getting phenomenal reductions in a punitive tax, I would say, all going to go up by that difference? And I think that's the question.
Since I'm also on the water system, God, I hope not. I mean, but we don't know yet. I mean, one of the things that I have got to believe is I believe there is room in that budget to make some reductions. So hopefully, that could be offset, the revenue reductions could be offset in that regard. Because I don't, I don't, we have got, when Frank mentioned, you're also going to look up and down this system. We have a fair number of people who are elderly who are getting $700 a month. Their water and sewer bills are more than their taxes. We have an elderly exemption. We earlier voted on a method as to even give them more relief. There is no relief in the water and sewer bills. Your water bill, your sewer bill is just exactly double what your water is. And one of the things that was mentioned earlier about, you know, the getting billed no matter whether you go into the sewer or not is true. It's a nature of the beast, and until you put meters on every sewer, that's not going to change. There are people up and down the system who fill up a swimming pool, and they bill both water and sewer for that. Well, I have a pool and I fill it up, but I don't flush it.
Mr. Riley.
You know what you do using as a bathroom?
I don't. I don't allow my kids to do it either.
Mr. Riley.
Jeff, I'd like to answer your question on that. It's what I referred to earlier, that the system needs to be looked at, and the users on the system need to be charged a reasonable rate, a rate compared to other water systems. Now, I'm not going to tell you the rest of the town's not going to pick up the end of that. They probably act. They already act. You've been paying a substantial amount of money for years now across the entire town space, but you can't put the entire burden of this system on just simply the users. I don't believe you can do it. And I'm not going to sit here tonight and tell people that if you're not in the system, you're not going to help pay for these systems, because I believe you are. Not a lot, maybe, but something. And that's what people clearly need to understand.
Mr. Kowalski.
It's been brought up numerous times, about the $28,000. That was done years ago. You keep bringing it up like we did, the president's commissioners, and it was not. It was done many years ago. You bring up the fact that you pay the employees of the water sewer department. We pay the employees. We just pay you to write the checks, the bookkeeper, because it would be easier to do along with the town payroll when they do it. They have the programs and stuff to do it. So we pay the town to write the checks, but we pay the town for the salaries completely. We also pay the town to do the audit, the yearly audit that the town has to go through. We pay a portion of that, and I believe it's somewhere like $1,400 for our system. We also pay for the insurance and whatever other expenses are on our employees. And like I said, the town is paid for any services that they give to us, and that goes, so that amount of money comes out of the budget of the water and sewer department.
Mr. Dawson.
I want to point out two things. I'm in this industry, this discussion I've heard an awful lot over the last five or 10 years. First thing is, there are multiple self-sustaining water systems in Osiphe right now today. You know, just one off the top of my head, the bluffs. You know, they have their own water system, they're self-sustaining. So that, I mean, it is an option. That does exist. The part that scares me as a ratepayer in Osiphe, as a taxpayer, is if we absorb this water system, I'm not worried about today, I'm not worried about tomorrow, the guys do a great job maintaining the water system, I've worked with them, they do a great job. I'm worried about 15, 18 years from now, when my son comes in here, and we're looking at $4, $5, $6 million to put a new tank in, to put new water mains in, whatever it is. That's the part that scares me, not today, but down the road. You know, and as a taxpayer that lives well away from the water system, that will never be served by the water system, I'm going to have to pay for that. My son's going to have to pay for that. That scares me a little bit.
Mr. Morgan.
You're absolutely right, but you're going to look at where you are already. You already own it. So we're not absorbing a water system. The town of Osiphe, you, I, everybody in this room, we already own the water system lock, stock, and barrel. The commission has, the commission has no borrowing authority.
Right.
And this is one of our concerns. I have, and I will be as plain as I can be, zero confidence that the commissioners are preparing for exactly what you're talking about.
And I agree, and no water system is stable.
The system that we've got in the ground is 25 years old. And contrary to what's been said, I never said it was failing. But it is, it's been in the ground 25 years. I can't tell you whether it's going to be two years, five years, or 10 years from now, but it is going to be significant, it is going to need significant work. And then it's going to come back to this town meeting, just like it did 25 years ago, because only the town can borrow much. Commission can't. Commission has no borrowing authority. It is owned already by the town of Osiphe. It's simply managed by a Board of Commissioners. So when it needs that improvement, it is coming back in for those millions of dollars. You're absolutely right. But it's going to come back whether or not this passes or not, because the town is the only one that can borrow.
That's an interesting point. So essentially, the problem here is that the board, the commission for the water department is not handling the commission, not handling the water department correctly. So ultimately, it's us that voted, the commissioners, right?
Right.
So we should all look at ourselves in this situation. You know, we voted for these people. So essentially, one of the other things that we can all look at is, you know, as these people come up, you know, for election to change that. I mean, we don't necessarily, the town doesn't necessarily have to, you know, make this drastic movement, and they can look at it in a different perspective. I have no opinion on it, other than I know that I don't want my son to pay for a water system that we're never going to get water from.
He's going to. I thought you said...
Ms. Martin.
Sam Martin. Rick, you spoke earlier to transparency. And every board in this town and commission has minutes on the website, but there is absolutely nothing from the Water Commission ever for any of your meetings. Can somebody address that, please? As far as transparency, there is no transparency there?
You'd have to ask the commission that, because that was our very transparent.
Mr. Kowalski.
Yes, there are minutes, they are recorded, and they are veiled at the water sewer department or by telephone upon request. They're there all the time. There was a survey by the state recently, which I have a copy of, and I can make available to the selectmen if they wish, but as far as the rates of the water system in Osiphe, we are in the middle of the pack. We're not on the high end, we're not on the low end. We're in the middle of the pack. So our rates are not out of line.
Mr. Kowalski, is there a reason why you don't provide the minutes to be put on the website? I believe that was the question. Is there any reason why you don't provide them?
No, but we can, if that's what is requested, it's no problem.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Altamore.
Call the question.
Yeah, I have one minute.
No, actually, there's a motion to call the question, and it's been seconded. That is a motion...
A point of order.
Who's asking? Yes, Mr. Conrad.
When the town voted to have the commission, it was RSA 31136.
Is that point of order?
Yes. And you'll see why in a minute. And what that says is that the town has the authority by majority vote to establish one or more water districts and designate a commission. So by this statute, I would say that we have established a district, a water district. And this is a legal question. That's why I brought it up before we voted on this. Because if we did establish a water district, then the question someone had here before, who can abolish that district, may come into play. So that's why I brought it up before we voted.
Would you like to address the legality of that question?
I don't think it's really a point of order, but let me just say, you didn't vote to establish a water district. You voted to establish water commissioners. And all that means is that the water commissioners do what would otherwise be done by the selectman in terms of managing the water system.
I think your point is well taken, though it was not technically a point of order.
I know, I tried to get it.
Yeah. Well done.
Established.
Well done.
And it is.
Okay. So it is established that it is a legal warrant. A motion to call the question has been moved and seconded. It does require a two-thirds majority vote. So all those in favor of moving the question, we're not voting on the article, we're just voting to move the question, please raise your placards high. Thank you. Those opposed, that constitutes a two-thirds majority, we will move the question. What we are doing is a secret ballot. Now, let me explain to you, your forms look like this. They are not numbered based on the article. They are numbered based on the vote. So what you need to do is pull off your yes, number one, and your yes and your no, number one, and you're voting with those squares, because this is our first secret ballot vote. We are looking at number one, please. The ballot clerks will come based on the four sections in here and put in if you are yes in favor, yes, number one. If you are no, not in favor, you put no, number one. The ballot clerks are showing that our boxes are empty, and as they come around, please put your votes into the boxes. Anybody outside of the gym area, if you wish to vote, you need to be in the gym, or your vote will not be counted. Anyone who has not seen a ballot clerk to place their vote? All right, we'll give them a couple of minutes to count the votes, and then I will read the results. and then I will read the results. All right, if we could come back to order, please. We have the results of the secret ballot, Article 18. In favor, we have eighty-seven yes votes. Opposed, we have fifteen no votes. This passes.
Will we not reconsider Article 18?
There's a motion to not reconsider Article 18, and it's been seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? This passes. We will not reconsider Article 18, we will move on to Article 19. Article 19 was submitted by petition to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,000 to be added to the Conservation Commission budget. This amount plus $3,000 from the Conservation Commission money is not raised from taxes to be used to fund a build-out analysis of the future growth of the town, which will assist in updating OSPA's existing master plan. This is not recommended by the selectmen or the budget committee. Is there a motion on this article? It is moved. Is there a second?
Second.
There has been a second. Mr. Adams?
Ron Adams, Chair of the Conservation Committee. We circulated the petition to put this article on the warrant. The build-out study, very simply, an environmental company comes in, they digitally identify all the buildings that are presently in OSPA. And that information comes back to the town. They identify all the open land in the town that can be developed or built on. That would be minus areas that have conservation easements on, areas that don't meet the zoning requirements that we presently have, areas like steep slope areas, mountain areas that cannot be built on. So then the town gets a map of all the buildable area in the town. Also on that map, it identifies all the present buildings that are on the land. Then they take the growth projections based on the town's growth the last ten years, the last twenty years, the last thirty years, and use those projections to show how the town will grow in the future. At some point, the town will be totally built out. In other words, all of the land will be used, based on the growth patterns of the past. The Conservation Commission believes that this is a very important planning tool. Because you begin to see, you end up with a map showing you all the areas where houses and commercial buildings can be put. For instance, OSPA owns a huge number of acres. And their intention, as I understand, is that once they are through mining the gravel, that that will be turned into residential and commercial land. It is important to plan for that growth. Just as the selectmen have said, that they want to be able to plan for the future use of the water system, we have to plan for the future growth of the town in terms of, yes, there are environmental concerns, but yes, roads, maintenance, what areas of the town are going to become more developed? That's going to include more roads, more highway maintenance, more police department coverage, more fire coverage. All those things are going to come with growth of the town in the next ten to twenty years. Virtually all of the towns surrounding us have, in fact, carried out these particular build-out studies to use in their town planning. OSPA does need to update its master plan. That is a state requirement every five years. This information can be very useful in updating the master plan. If the town was to go out and do it itself, it will cost the town a minimum of $10,000, because that's what some of the other towns around us have had to pay. What we are proposing, because part of this was done under state DES grants, and the Conservation Commission from their own fund is willing to pay $3,000, we are asking the taxpayers to only pay $3,000. So you're saving $7,000. You do need to plan for future growth, and this is an important tool for that. Also, it does focus on OSPA Lake and the quality of the water in OSPA Lake. In some towns, the water quality of the lakes has not been protected, and as a result, the lakes have deteriorated, which affects the property values around the lake. Fifty-two, well, the selectmen told me that fifty-two percent of our tax revenue comes from OSPA Lake properties. If the value of those properties goes down, it means every other taxpayer in the town is going to have to make up that money. The water quality of the lake is extremely important to our local economy, to the people that live there, to our taxpayers. That's why the Conservation Commission petitioned this warrant article. We're only asking the town for $3,000. We're putting up $3,000 of our own to complete this study. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Mr. Morgan?
I preface my remarks by saying that I have nothing but admiration and support for our Conservation Commission. That's not who proposed this. The organization that brought it to us was the Green Mountain Conservation Group, which, irrespective of how you feel, I have made very claim that I have absolutely no desire whatsoever to work with, and I do not believe that they hold the citizens of the town of OSPA's interest at heart. This is a build-out analysis. I've read the one that they conducted in Freedom. And while everything that Ron said is true as a possible side benefit, the real focus of the study would be on watershed, which, in case you hadn't noticed, we're in a hilly area. Just about every lot in town ends up being in a watershed. And the ultimate deposit of phosphorus into OSPA Lake. The thing that concerns me is that items in the study, which I've read, again, Freedom's, talk about requiring people to capture the rainwater from their roofs and treat it. And other items like that as means of reducing phosphorus. I am, I believe, more of a conservationist than many of the people who call themselves conservationists. I spend a great deal of time in the wood, in the water. I don't want companies coming in including, I don't want, I certainly don't want to ruin the aquifer. I don't want to collect the rainwater off my roof and have to treat it. I feel and felt that organizations such as Green Mountain Conservation Group were going to use this information to influence our development, our commercial development, our residential development. And we already, and Ron, you probably have the number of thousands of acres of land that we have in conservation easement. I really felt like we were buying the ammunition, if we approved it, that we would be buying the ammunition for these people to shoot us with. They may shoot us. I don't want to buy the bullets that allow them to shoot us. And that was the reason. The other part of it was that this never came in until we were all the way through the budget process. I don't know that we would have approved it if we had agreed with it.
Mr. Ryan?
Thank you. Whoa, I've switched over to this side. I moved over closer to my wife. I have to say that I think that this is a good idea as somebody that's in the business of land development and seeing what's going on. I think any development within 250 feet of a lake is subject to the Shoreland Protection Act. The treatment brick of roof runoff isn't what you think. It's, you know, stone drip edges. That's considered treatment. The whole intent is to try and infiltrate the storm water back into the ground rather than to run it off. You know, ninety percent of the homes around here have stone drip edges. So your runoff, your roof runoff is being treated. That's what the NHDES accepts for roof treatment. I think that anytime you have this kind of information, it's valuable. I think the timing, it sounds like it was unfortunate. I think it would have been nice if it had gone through the process. But sometimes I feel like, you know, you don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. And this is a, if this is a, yeah. If this is, you know, it seems like it's a good idea, it's a good planning tool. And I think that if we can get it for short money, then I would urge the voters to support it.
Mr. Rapsin?
Thank you, Madam Laura. May I ask Mr. Adams a question?
Absolutely, if he's willing to answer.
Ron, you said the study will show us where buildings are, where the open spaces. Will it somehow map out where the $22,000 acres of town use we have here in this town would show up?
Actually, I have a map that I've done that with.
But will this study be combined with?
Yes, it will. It's going to be non-buildable land.
Thank you. Well, that's not at all town use, and it is buildable.
Right.
Mr. Chilak?
As a member of the planning board, as vice chair, I want to speak very strongly in favor of doing this not very expensive study. It's not clear to me really why it should be controversial. You may like or not like the Green Mountain Conservation Group, but it will have absolutely nothing to do with the conduct of this study. It's simply encouraging towns to do these things. And really, we do have to update the master plan. It would be so helpful for us to be able to understand approximately the timeline of the total build-out of the town and the traffic issues, the services, and environmental impact that will result from that total build-out. The underlying assumption is that there will be a total build-out. This is not about whether to build or not, whether to prevent development. It's about how do we anticipate and cope with the consequences of what will happen? I'm glad to, it's worth noting that, as Mr. Adams did, that just about every town in the area has indeed done a build-out study. And it was not controversial in any of them, as far as I know. And I went to trouble of getting a list of them. It's Conway, Eaton, Madison, Wakefield, Wolfboro, Effingham, Oltenboro, Merritt, and Freedom. The Freedom study, that I'm glad you've read it this morning, is about twenty pages long, it's been online for about a year now. It's very interesting. It includes part of OSPA. It includes that part of OSPA where Freedom and OSPA come together at OSPA Lake around Levitt Bay. I don't recall reading anything about capturing rainwater and keeping it from going into the lake. But here's what it did say. First of all, it projects how long it will take to reach total build-out, that is, all the buildable land under current regulations is occupied. Well, that's somewhere between, and this is a corner of OSPA, which was part of the Freedom study. That's somewhere between 2041 and 2064. Okay, most of this year won't be around to see what happens. But we'd like to be able to anticipate what the issues are. The main issue they pointed to was that with no measures taken, the increase of phosphorus coming into the lake will rise by about forty percent, which is what feeds milk oil and algae, drives down water quality, drives down property values and the tax base. So that's not a trivial problem. What to do about it, it said most of this increase would come from residential development and could be dealt with by careful design and placing of new septic systems over the next twenty years. Simply by carefully designing and placing septic systems, we can prevent that large increase in phosphorus. Also, it said, most of the increase will flow from the north end of the lake in Freedom to OSPA. So really, what we need to anticipate here is not only proper septic design, but very close collaboration with the town of Freedom and other neighboring towns. So again, this is about coping with future issues, anticipating the future, not stumbling with our eyes closed into the future. It's not going to cost very much, and we really hope that the town will agree to do it. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Sam Martin. I urge you all to listen to your selectmen here. I've watched another town struggle with this for five years. They're still struggling with it. They are still turning it down. Might I say, remember what your mother or your father said, if it sounds too good to be true.
It is. Mr. Fishblad?
Hi. Just a couple of things. I guess I don't know a lot about this, but to me, for $3,000, we might be getting a tool that's useful to economic development as well in the future, not just the points that you're talking about. So I would kind of urge to think about it, because if there were to ever be an Economic Development Council or a body of that sort in this town, which I hope there is and I hope to be a part of, there's going to be a lot of studies that are needed to actually prove economic value and give reasons why people should come here to start business and help lower your taxes. So I would actually think about the importance of this as a tool to help design OSPA for future growth, and not just the negative impacts. It's easy to sit up here and talk negative impacts of this, but knowledge is power. And I think spending $3,000 on something like this gives us knowledge, which we're willing to, I mean, we're investing in our own town. It's easier for everybody here to spend $200,000 than $3,000. Blows my mind. Thank you.
Mr. Lang?
Gordon Lang. I also am a landowner in Wolfboro. And I will acknowledge that these kinds of maps do force towns to go through some difficult maneuvers. In watching the town of Wolfboro deal with this, what it forced them to do, it forced the zoning board and the planning board and the selectmen to all come to terms with their different interpretations of where the town was headed and how they were interpreting the master plan. There were weaknesses in their master plan. And this kind of mapping actually brought out some of their weaknesses and their different interpretations. And they've actually had to work much more closely together and work on revising their master plan as well. One of the most interesting things is how they interpret what they value in terms of green space. Are they, how are they going to deal with these landlocked parcels? The parcels that you can't get to or build on by current planning rules, zoning rules. And so if things are really only accessible for logging, then those are really unbuildable lots, and you need to deal with them that way. I strongly encourage this map, I think it's a great part.
Mr. Marrow?
I listened to what everybody had to say, and I agree with everyone. However, I'm really going to vote against this, and I'll tell you why. I have an inherent distrust of concrete. After serving down there for ten years, and I was on the Research Recreation Committee to develop the, worked on the Shoreline Protection Act, which I think all the things we have protected pretty good. But I also was privileged to see people who had developed things like this come into concrete and force through, or maybe not force through, yeah, force through bills which dealt with different pieces of property in that particular town when the residents may not have wanted it. So while I think all of this stuff is useful, the only thing I have to say is you're going to be off the cap.
Mr. Pustel?
Yep, Bob Pustel, as OSPA. As the gentleman over here said, it's only a map. That's part of the point I wanted to make, is we're discussing whether to have this study done or not. And if it's voted down tonight, I would strongly urge the selectmen to consider independently getting some such study made. And that's the main point I want to make, is it's a valuable... And that's the main point I want to make, is it's a valuable tool. Regardless of how we get it, we should do something like that. I grew up in metropolitan Boston area. In my younger years in the Air Force, I lived in the LA basin for five years. And then, and tail into my, well, a good chunk of my career lived in the metropolitan New York area. And so I got to witness firsthand in several different locations the consequences of willy-nilly development, lack of foresight in terms of allowing for rights-of-way for power lines, sewer lines, mass transit lines. You know, we may or may not ever get big enough to need mass transit, but if we're going to want it someday, we got to have a right-of-way for it, or we got to spend a lot of money on eminent domain. That may not be a good example in a rustic area like this, but it's an example. My point is, without some foresight of what's going to come, we're going to end up like the LA basin, which is a frickin' zoo. And so it's not a bad idea. If we don't go to do it tonight, we ought to do something like it in the near-term future.
Thank you.
Rick St. James?
And I would oppose this. I'm suspicious of anything that has anything to do with any of the conservation groups for a multitude of reasons. And, you know, this watershed protection is actually, it's a guise of high conservation through zoning, through watershed protection. And if the town does think that it should be done, it should be done independently of any conservation group.
Mr. Goss?
I've heard many people who's referred to this as a tool. You're right, it is a tool. It's a double-edged sword. You can go and plan by it, which is a good idea, but on the other hand, you can also regulate, you know, get groups that will come in and regulate the use of your properties. So you really might want to think about that. Do you want more regulations on your personal properties?
Mr. Gillette?
To answer that, the only group I know of that could take a study like this and impose new regulations on us is A, the selectmen, and B, this body. That's it. Outside groups do not come in and impose regulations on us. That doesn't happen in this country, or at least in the state.
Mr. Barry?
Yeah, I'm actually on the planning board. I'm against it. I wouldn't give any more information they've already got personally. If you don't believe me, attend a few of our meetings.
Mr. Bull?
I don't understand. Like I said earlier, I've volunteered for the Conservation Commission for years, and when I left there, they had $30,000, $1,000 in their bank account. Why are they burdening the taxpayers with, I know it's just a measly three grand, but why don't they pay for it themselves with their own money, their own bank account? They collect rent from the fish hatchery.
Why don't you pay for it? Why don't you write a check?
Mr. Adams?
Kevin, why don't you write a check for $3,000? I mean, really, it is to benefit, it is to benefit the town, and we feel the Conservation Commission voted that, in fact, we thought that it was a good enough idea that we would support it and put in $3,000. But we felt that it was legitimate to ask the town to put in $3,000. This, virtually as Mr. Gillette said and I said, every town around us has done this. If you vote to have changes in zoning, and basically what affects the development in this town are the zoning laws. The zoning laws are brought to us through the planning board, through zoning, and they come to the town meeting and are voted. So this isn't somebody coming in and saying, oh, we're going to change the zoning laws in Osiphe. The zoning laws start right here and are rewritten here and are voted here at town meeting. Okay? It isn't Washington that comes in. There are things in terms of lakes because the state owns all the lakes. Okay? But when it comes to building here in Osiphe, it is us that votes those laws. Any of our zoning laws that are on the books right now come and were voted on right here in this town meeting.
Mr. Morgan?
That, Ron, I understand what you're saying about zoning, to say that no outside agency through administrative action, I mean, DES and Concord impose rules on us every day. I make no bones about it. My chagrin with the Green Mountain Conservation Group is they work with the state DES to block the townspeople from having access to Lone Pine Beach. So to say that no outside influences occur on our zoning or on our planning or on our use is, it may be stretching. They don't change our zoning, but they, all of these outside agencies have tremendous influence on rules, many of which aren't even done, aren't even done by law. They're done by administrative rulings from some bureaucratic council.
But our building zoning laws are voted. Mr. Adams, you need to go to a microphone if you're going to speak, please, and be recognized. Mr. Gillette?
I think it's unfortunate that a 10-year-old rudge, which I think is actually fairly baseless.
We still don't have a beat.
We don't.
Mr. Morgan, Mr. Gillette has the floor.
Thank you. A 10-year-old rudge is animating this discussion. It's quite likely that DES, and I agree DES can be very intrusive, but that has nothing to do with the study we're talking about here. DES would never have allowed that beach and that place because there were endangered plants growing there. Okay. Green Mountain Conservation Group, they also may have agreed with them. This is not a powerful group. This is a couple of hundred people who have an annual meeting and a staff every year. So this is really irrelevant. This is an independent study. The planning board is not, the Conservation Commission is not interested in some advocacy study produced by some outside organization. We want simple information. And then we will all work with the select board, the Conservation Commission, to figure out what it means for us and how to cope with the issues that I'm sure this will identify, not to limit development.
Mr. Merrill?
I would respectfully disagree. The state, the state can come in and mess with what you're doing. If they have these plans here, they can come in, they can...
Mr. Merrill, I'm going to stop you right there. We're not going to discuss what the state can and can't do at this point. We're going to discuss whether or not we are going to raise and appropriate this $3,000 for the purpose of this study. Do you have any comments relative to that?
No, I was only answering his comment. He said they couldn't do it.
Thank you.
No questions?
Okay.
If you don't vote on this, are you still going to vote and spend the $3,000 on it in Rome?
If we vote this down, are you going to take three grand out of your pocket and go get this study done?
Please, please go to the microphone if you're going to respond.
The cost of the study is $6,000. We are putting, the Conservation Commission is putting up $3,000 and is asking the town to put up $3,000.
So if you think that this study is that much, and you've got the money, put up the other three grand.
We're doing it for the town. I think...
You're part of the town.
We're not going to have prostrate. You've each made your point. Ms. Rhines?
Can I call the question?
Yes. It's been moved and seconded. It does require two-thirds majority vote. We are now only voting on calling the question. Raise your placards, please, if you're in favor. Thank you. Those opposed? Okay. What we are going to do now, because this has been called as a secret ballot vote, is we will do the same process as before. We are on secret ballot vote number two. So choose your votes. And let me point out that there was some confusion with the last secret ballot vote. You must remain in your seat. The ballot clerks must see you put your vote into the ballot box. You may not come up to the ballot clerks after the fact because we want to be able to see that one person has one vote. So please remain seated if you wish to vote. And the ballot clerks will show their empty boxes. We are only accepting yes to or no to because this is the second secret ballot vote. Are there any questions? All right. If the ballot clerks could please collect the votes, please. Is there anyone in attendance who has not yet voted and wishes to vote? I will tell you that earlier I forgot to mention that I wanted to thank the Highway Criminal that they did for setting up for the elections yesterday, and also Kelly Skehan and her staff. So if we could all... Usually I do that at the beginning of the night. I'll let you know as soon as the results are calculated. I have the results. In favor, we have 33 votes. Opposed, we have 49 votes. Article 20, to hear the reports of agents, auditors, committees, and officers thereof, they are contained in this book. I would like to thank Kelly Skehan and Ellen White and the crew that put this all together, all of the department heads put that together. Yes.
Do we reconsider this, you know, not to go back to this?
We don't have to.
Well, let's say someone was leaving, and then all of a sudden somebody wants to go back to this article here.
Well, now that we have moved on to Article 20, this is the time of the night where I would accept a motion to adjourn. And once we adjourn, then we cannot reconsider any of the articles from tonight.
And I'll second that motion?
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor of adjournment? Thank you.